Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting of September 11th, 2017. We have a brief but very important meeting to take care of this evening. We are going to begin with our role call. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Present.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. Is there anybody present in the audience this evening who would like participating in Audience Communications? Seeing none, we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda. If you're following along with our agenda in our audience this evening, as I said, this meeting is going to be rather brief, just a couple of items on the agenda. The agenda can be found just outside the door on the table on your right. Following this special meeting, we will be going into a Committee of the Whole at 6:30. So if you're looking for our lengthier agenda of the evening, those items will be covered at 6:30. The agenda, if you're looking at home and you'd like to follow along, can be found on our website, and that is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to the agendas and follow along with both agendas for this evening. The next item on our agenda right now is Item 3, Resignation. This is for information purposes only for the Board and not an item on which the Board needs to vote. The next item on our agenda this evening is one that we are very, very happy to be entertaining this evening, and that is Item Number 4, Appointment of High School Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Kevin Etoo as Principal at Churchill High School.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mr. Archibald, are you going to be handling this for us?
I will at least get us started. Thank you, President Burton, and good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
It is absolutely my pleasure to do the preliminary reduction of Mr. Etoo. Mr. Etoo has 12 years' experience with Livonia Public Schools. In addition to coaching, it includes being a business education teacher at the Livonia Career Technical Center and Stevenson High School. Most recently, he's been the Assistant Principal in the Scheduling Office for the last six years. Mr. Etoo holds a Bachelor's Degree from Western Michigan University. Go Chips!
Roll vote?
I'm sorry. Sorry. There is a... Mr. Etoo also holds a Master's Degree in the Art of Teaching from Winthrop University in South Carolina, and a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Wayne State University. Mr. Etoo, throughout his time, has held a number of leadership positions within the schools he's been associated with, as well as throughout the district. He is currently the President or the Co-President of the Leeds Group as a person. He is certainly a man of character and integrity, and he is a leader who brings energy and enthusiasm and professionalism. And I'm excited to have Mr. Etoo in the role of Principal at Churchill High School and look forward to working with him in his capacity.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Okus, did you want to...
I'll just add a few words. I will.
Go right ahead.
It's always a special night when you become appointed an Administrator in Livonia Public Schools. So we know tonight is a special night for Kevin and for his beautiful family, who I'm sure he'll introduce to us in just a few moments. I'd like to thank all of the Churchill staff and administrative colleagues in the district for being here as well. We know that Kevin is fully committed to taking on this role with great passion, enthusiasm, and commitment. He is very eager to formally begin in this role. He's been serving as Acting Principal for the past month, has done an outstanding job of working with an exceptional leadership team at Churchill High School, and outstanding staff. They have gone through monitoring a great deal of construction, as you know, and have just done an exemplary job in getting school underway. Under Kevin's leadership, we know that he has brought, as Mr. Archibald shared, great character and commitment to the students, to his colleagues at Churchill, and to the families as part of our Churchill School community. He has served us very, very well at both the school level and district level as a building administrator, and has contributed in many ways, including most recently chairing our Alternatives to Suspension Committee. As you know, we've spent a good deal of time talking about that in recent weeks, and he has spearheaded work in that area as well. We are thrilled to be recommending to you, Mr. Kevin Etoo, for the role of High School Principal at Churchill, and we would ask you to vote on that this evening.
Thank you so much. Are there comments or questions from the Board? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Etoo for the last several years as my son's AP, not saying that my son has spent much time in his office. But it is... I just wanted to congratulate you and to say this is what it did well deserved.
Thank you.
Comments or questions for any other Board members?
Congratulations.
We have heard an overwhelming amount of support from the Churchill staff, and we are absolutely thrilled to see you entering this role officially and just welcome you into this new role. You're certainly not a new Administrator to the district, but new in this role, and we are just thrilled. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations. Please come on up.
Sure.
Introduce or have some of your family join you.
She's excited.
We are so happy that you're here with your dad. Hi.
And for those of you who couldn't see behind the scenes before we began, Mr. Etoo's other daughter was able to count us down to begin our meeting this evening. That's fun.
Well, thank you, President Burton, and thank you, Board Trustees. Thank you, Superintendent Okus, Mr. Archibald, and Central Office Personnel. I am excited to be here this evening in front of you and in front of the Churchill community and Livonia Public Schools as the next Principal of Churchill High School. It's truly, truly an honor. I sit here humbled and proud, and humbled for the opportunity to lead the Churchill community, proud of who I'm walking with. I think of Mark Hague and Carla Helvengas, Nicole Hunter, most recently Bruce Rivera. I think of our Secretaries, our Custodians, our Peras, Food Service, and of course, our teachers and the job they do within our community and how they support our students to make sure that they're successful in every way. It doesn't go unnoticed and makes my job easier. But at this time, I'm going to pause for a moment and mention a few key identified personnel. That's for you, Dr. T. Of course, my wife, who's back here, who took a chance on me 18 years ago. Thank you.
Yeah.
And blessed me with four beautiful children, Ariel, who did the countdown, and Aiden, who's back here, Amelia's in my lap, and the one-year-old around here somewhere, Elena. So I thank her for her unwavering support all along the way here.
I'll say hi to Uncle Dan, too, okay?
To my mom, who's been here every step of the way. She's a retired LPS specialized teacher, has been supportive every step of the way. I thank her for her unconditional love all along the way. And my brothers, my sisters-in-law, my nieces and nephews, who are back behind me right now for being a guide and support, you know, as well. I'm thankful for all of that, especially thankful for my dad, who also was an LPS employee for years. And I remember 25 years ago, as a teenager, he had a conversation with me as a teenager and had a specific phrase that he used, one that he actually used in his application letter to LPS 40 years ago. And it just simply was, "If you cannot help, may you never hurt." And I think about that often. My sister-in-law Erin framed that for me, and it sits in my office, and I look at it, you know, almost daily, and I always... It's my mantra at this point, if I cannot help, may I never hurt. And it allows me to reflect back on my career as an educator. And 17 years ago, I shifted from business to education. And 16 years ago, I walked into a classroom in Charlotte, North Carolina, as a substitute teacher for the first time, and that date was September 11th, 2001.
Oh, wow.
And as devastating as that day was for our country and for our family and friends and for us, it allowed me to really reassure my decision to move into education and knew where I needed to be to be with those students as much as I could from this day forward. I come back to this moment, taking my hat off and putting a new hat on, but never losing the fact that I'm an educator, and that's what I'm here to do, and it's a people business. And in the end, if I cannot help, may I never hurt. And so I thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we congratulate you, and you've been in our administrative ranks for a while, but it's a special evening when you are appointed a High School Principal, and we are thrilled pieces. We are immensely proud of our three high schools, and it's a lot of responsibility and a lot of joy to be the leader of those buildings.
Thank you.
So, thank you. As is customary with Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, when we have major events to celebrate, we will take a few minutes of a break before we go into our next meeting. We may not begin our next meeting right at 6:30, maybe a few minutes afterward, because those who are present this evening would like to congratulate Mr. Etoo in person. Again, if you are part of the Churchill community, congratulations. You have a fabulous Administrator leading your team, and we are just thrilled. We are now at the end of our agenda of our special meeting. If you are here this evening for our Committee of the Whole and our lengthier discussions, those will be starting in probably about 10 minutes or so. Right now, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education meetings of the evening. We have concluded our special meeting of the evening, and we are now going into our Committee of the Whole of September 11th, 2017. A little bit of background, if you're watching for one of the first times. Our Committee of the Whole meetings are designed to take a deep dive into the topics before the Board of Education. You can expect, if you're going to be tuning in with us this evening, you can expect some lengthy conversation, quite a bit of interaction back and forth with our administrative team. When items are concluded in their conversation and the Board feels like they were ready to go for a vote, they will be put on an agenda for a future meeting for a vote, typically one to two weeks after this meeting. If they are not yet ready for a vote, perhaps they're informative, or we have directed our administration that we need more information, they may be coming up for a discussion at yet another Committee of the Whole meeting. So you'll be hearing a lot of discussion tonight. Get a cup of coffee if you're so inclined, but do not expect any votes to be taken tonight. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communications this evening? Mr. Frank? You could if you want. Okay. We don't have anyone who's indicated an interest in, serious interest in participating in Audience Communications this evening. We will go to the next item on our agenda. Our agenda is, by the way, if you're in our audience, can be found just outside the door on the table. If you are watching from home, they can be found on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along. We are right now at Item 2 on our agenda, Committee of the Whole, and 2A is the designation of voting delegates for the MASB's 2017 Delegate Assembly. And Mrs. Okus, I understand that you have some information for us.
I do. Thank you, President Burton. Good evening, everyone. As you know, the Michigan Association of School Boards will be meeting for their annual conference in November. MASB's 2017 Delegate Assembly will begin on Thursday, November 9th, at 7:30 PM at the Lansing Center. All delegates and alternates must be school board members, and only delegates and alternates named by our Board may offer motions and vote on issues. However, all school board members may speak on the issues and participate in debate. So this evening, what we are looking to do is to name four board members as delegates representing Livonia Public Schools, and if the Board would so choose, may name up to three alternate delegates. And so if you know you may be attending the conference this year, and we'll be talking a little bit more about the conference in just a moment, but if you think you will be there on Thursday evening and would like to serve as a delegate, then we would like to submit your name as such. Again, Livonia Public Schools may have four voting delegates and three alternate delegates.
Board members, does anyone here know that they are going to be present at that meeting in the evening? It's a three or four-day conference, and I know a lot of us are going to be coming and going at various times for that conference. But if you know you're going to be present Thursday evening, and if you'd like to be one of our delegates, you may choose to do so. Typically, what we do is out of seven, we put four of us down who are at least reasonably thinking about being there, and the others as alternates should someone not be able to attend. Mrs. Bradford, are you...
Yes, I was going to say something. I know Crystal and I are going to be attending Thursday morning, but it's like 8:00 AM class, so I don't know that we would be staying there all day till 7:30. Plus, we have to be back Friday, so I might have to maybe confer with her to see if we would be staying, but...
Okay. We could put you down as alternates if you prefer.
Maybe alternates for us would be great.
Mr. Centers?
I plan to attend.
Okay. Mrs. Jarvis?
What time does the session start in the evening on Thursday?
At least it's 7:30.
7:30. I can go.
Typically, it's a couple of hours.
I can do 7:30.
Yeah. Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can make it, too.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'm available as well.
You're available? Okay. I'm planning on attending also. Why don't we put Mr. Centers, Mrs. Jarvis, Mrs. Bonnefield, and Mr. Johnson down as our voting delegates, and myself and Karen Bradford and Crystal Frank as alternates?
That'd be perfect.
And then should anyone's schedule not allow them to attend, let one of the three of us know?
Let us know, and we can work it out.
Yeah. All right.
We will submit your names on the Board's behalf.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
President Burton, if I may, I also wanted to share with the group, I know you received this in all likelihood at your home, or perhaps in one of your Board update packets, but this is a summary of the conference program that will take place on November 9th through the 12th. I know many of our board members participate in MASB training, and have worked very hard to garner certification as a certified board member and those who are working toward that. I wanted to be sure to let you know that according to our Board of Education bylaws, we would need to vote on approving your attendance and admission for the September 24th agenda. And so if you are interested in attending, would you please let Mrs. Wasnick know by Wednesday, September 13th? So that would be this Wednesday. If you could let her know the classes for which you would like to be registered, and we will put those on the agenda for the upcoming Board meeting.
Following up on Mrs. Okus's comments, this Board has taken a great deal of seriousness and responsibility to our responsibilities as Board members. None of us walk into this room fully understanding and being fully knowledgeable about all the areas on which we need to vote and steer the direction of the school district. MASB is the Michigan Association of School Boards, and they provide a wealth of classes. There are a series of nine classes that Board members are offered, and our Board is either all certified in those nine areas, or they are newer Board members and they're very close to completing that certification. Our community ought to be very proud of that, because the people who serve our school district as members of the Board of Education take this responsibility very seriously. Matters of some of the classes that those basic courses are offered are in such areas as school law, school finance, curriculum, assessment, items under which we have to take votes that affect 15,000-plus students and many millions of dollars. So this Board takes those responsibilities very, very seriously. I commend this Board for taking an awful lot of time out of their own schedules to become certified in those basic areas, and then every one of them has continued their professional development and their education to make sure that we are staying abreast of current law and how it affects our school district. So I commend this Board of Education in taking their own professional development very seriously. Those who, as Mrs. Okus said, if you are intending on taking any classes, if you can let Jill know by September 13th, we can make sure that those are, the approval for those are on the agenda for the 24th. I believe, Mrs. Bradford, I think that your classes and Mrs. Frank's classes have already been approved.
Correct. Yes, we're all set to go.
Okay.
Yes.
All righty. And Mrs. Bradford, if there are other conference sessions that you need to attend, take a look at that and let Mrs. Wasnick know if necessary.
And I'll let Crystal know, too, if there's anything else.
All righty. Any other comments on this topic? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I would be interested in maybe staying up there and taking some classes. So if we can, I don't know how we can, in the next couple of days, maybe get a carpool thing, sign-up doodle or something where we can kind of all see what we're doing.
Coordinate schedules and so forth.
Yeah, so I might decide to take different classes depending on what the transportation and stuff looks like.
Sounds good. Let's do that.
Throw that out there.
Okay. All righty. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is Item 3, Building in Sight, and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. We have four items on the agenda tonight. The first is our quarterly dashboard report. We have Mr. Smith here from Cressa, and Mr. Francis will be our presenter.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I want to just introduce Mr. Scott Smith from Plant Moran Cressa, owner's representative. And as we normally do each quarter, this is going to go through the June 30th of 17. Mr. Smith's going to present that quarterly dashboard report to the Board. And then following that with B and C, the way we wrote it up. Okay, with B and C, then he's also going to stick around, and we're going to have a conversation for those items as well. So I appreciate you joining us this evening, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Yeah, the last time we presented it was back in May, and that was taking us through the March 30th quarterly snapshot. This gets us through June 30th. I'll try to take a high level, not go so much over the goals and objectives of the bond. We restate them here just because we find them important. It's good to refresh ourselves of why we're here presenting this bond update. But going over to the middle column, this is Tab A in your binders. Really, we're still looking at a $200 million budget. Nothing's changed there with respect to that. Our commitments have increased slightly. Not a lot has changed in terms of commitments over the summer. A lot of that work was already awarded, so essentially, we were just busy building and spending for the most part. We did have some awards with furniture and some other smaller awards, but nothing major. We did move some money around within the budget to kind of reestablish budgets where we needed to. We had some budget revisions we made several months ago when the district made the decision to close certain schools and to move some things around. So that's all been done, and it's reflective in this report here. Jumping down to the lower middle section, that's really our cash flow. We've spent about $27 million of Series 2, which is about $10 million more than the last quarterly update. Still a long ways to go. There's still some very important projects that we're both working on and have yet to bid out and award. Probably the most important parts, you know, what I would want to focus on would be the three-month schedule and the critical project issues. Up in the upper right corner is our three-month schedule, but here's kind of the things that we're doing. I think this is important because there aren't a lot of board awards generally this time of the year, but the bond team is still busy working on things, getting things designed, getting decisions made relative to next year's projects. And so that's all happening kind of behind the scenes, but there isn't so many action items for the Board at that time, but there's a lot of work that's going on and taking place. So Stevenson, we wrapped that project up, so we're going to be busy through the rest of the year, getting the punch list items done, wrapping up the financial side of that, getting closeout documents, operation and maintenance manuals over to the district, showing how to care for those items that were installed. Churchill, of course, is an ongoing project. We wrapped up Phase 1 this summer. There's really four phases, but what's going to continue through this winter and into the spring will be the auditorium areas and then also the band areas. The band will be turned over in January, and everything else will continue through the summer. And then once the summer hits, we'll have another big wave of projects this summer of '18. We're also closing out some of the, I'll call them the miscellaneous projects, but those were the smaller projects at Garfield, Randolph, Frost, Cooper. Those are smaller improvements that we came in June and presented to you folks, but we'll be doing the same thing there, punching those out, getting the financial part closed out, and tidying those up. A little bit later, we're going to talk about Garfield Community School and some of the recommendations there. The intent would be to award contracts in September, expedite the materials. We have a little bit shorter window to do that, and then start construction here in October, wrapping up in January for the start of their second semester, or second term. We're also finalizing the pavement projects from this past summer at multiple schools, really. We're continuing with our roofing assessments. We met with them earlier this week. Things are going well. They've been out to nearly all the schools. They're starting to compile all of the data, and the intent would be to prioritize the roofs here and just see what the condition of them is, see if any of them have more pressing needs, and then kind of develop a game plan that we can come back and present to you guys, you know, later this fall. We're also in design phase for next summer's sinking fund projects, which would be more pavement replacement work. Next summer, it would be Johnson Upper Elementary, Emerson Middle School, Stevenson High School, Franklin High School, which would be the bus loop only, Roosevelt and Cooper. And I would say we're really spending a lot of time with Roosevelt and Cooper. We've done some traffic studies with a consultant to kind of give us some options to help improve traffic flow and congestion that site's been experiencing over the last many years. And then also want to look at Hardlight Cooper. That site has some water and some drainage issues, so we're getting the right people involved, starting discussions with the county and the city, because there'll be some more permitting work associated with those sites than we would have at the others. The others are more straightforward, where it's more of a one-for-one replacement, but we could be doing something more significant at those sites. And lastly, we're really working on the next summer's projects at this point from a design perspective. As a refresher, next summer's projects, we're going to be doing work at Webster, Buchanan, which is more of a limited scope. That school district went, or that school went through a more recent renovation and doesn't require or need, have all the same needs that a lot of the other buildings have. Jackson, early childhood, the Livonia Career Technical Center, and then also, we're going to be completing entryways at those projects. And also at Churchill as well, if you'll recall, we left that part out of the Churchill. We were still trying to figure out just how we wanted that to look, and I think we've got there. We've got some economies of scale now where we've got multiple projects, and the team decided, let's package that together. The work is all related. If you think about the buildings, there really isn't a lot of site to them. So having more teeth with a combined package like this should help with the bid coverage. It should help with the bid results, should help with the budget. So that's our strategy with that, and the plan would have all that stuff bid out early next year to come and take to you guys for awards in the spring. Critical project issues, more of the same, but we've got Stevenson. We're really trying to wrap that project up here by the end of the year. Churchill continues on. We do still have some work at Frost and Cooper that we need to complete. We've had some difficulties obtaining the proper permitting from the state, so there's a couple of small areas that are on hold within those schools. They're just, we've made multiple calls, multiple efforts. The state has been swamped, overloaded. They have all of their plan reviewers this past month out on site doing inspections across the state, so we're hoping to get back into that. We've came up with Plan B, and it's all been communicated with the schools, and everything, I believe, is functioning quite well, but there are some loose ends with that, so we're hoping to get those permits soon. We'll close out the final sinking fund projects of the summer. Most of them are all done. They're just in punch list phase, with the exception of the tennis courts at Churchill, which should be wrapped up towards the end of the month, maybe the first part of next month, weather permitting. The asphalt's been down for some time. We're in the process of installing the fences, and we've got to come back and put color on it and stripe the lines. Actually, there's not much, once we get that down, it's really just a couple of days if the weather's right, and we can open that back up to everyone for their use.
And just as a reminder, that was, it was always pre-planned that the fall tennis season would not, that it wouldn't be ready for the fall tennis season. So being very conservative, the athletic director at Churchill had moved all of his practices and events to away venues with the help of Stevenson and Franklin and helping out. So anything earlier than the end of the season would really be a win and advanced from what they were planning for. So we'd always planned for that to be offline for this fall season.
Good point, yes. The rest of it is really a restatement of kind of the things we've talked about, but we're busy. Things are going well. Things are on schedule, and after tonight, I think the next thing would be to just kind of keep moving with design on next year's work and get that out for...
So anything earlier than the end of the season would really be a win and advanced from what they were planning for. So we'd always planned for that to be offline for this fall season.
Good point, yes. The rest of it is really a restatement of kind of the things we've talked about. But we're busy. Things are going well. Things are on schedule, and after tonight, I think the next thing would be to just kind of keep moving with design on next year's work and get that out for bid as soon as we can, and come back and share the results with you all.
And I just want to just briefly thank Scott and Paul and Plant Moran Cressa. They've been wonderful partners with us. Our team, Mr. Law and Mr. Roberts, we meet with representatives from OAK and SES and NTH when needed, and other companies who do professional services with the bond and with the sinking fund. It's really a great team, and we've been sort of pulling together... Weekly, we always have our bond meeting, but then there's other times we have to get together, so I just want to throw out there that I appreciate everybody's effort to work together as a team for the best possible results for Levonian Public Schools.
Thanks. It would be... I'd be remiss if we didn't thank the George OAK Company, too. If anybody was in Churchill shortly before it opened, a lot came together really fast. We bit off a huge task this summer. I would say from an area square footage, we did less than we are going to be doing next summer, but the types of things we were doing, complete reconfiguration, walls coming down, building new, it was a major undertaking, and it really came together last minute with a lot of help from everybody. It was a team effort, and it got done. There's still things that we're working on, but it did come together. But it wasn't without a lot of hard work from those folks and all the trades that are really under contract with the district. They pulled it all together.
And since you're on that topic, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, I need to give a huge shout out to them, because they were the ones that were coming behind all of those subcontractors, and they finished over the Labor Day weekend to get that building cleaned up and ready to go Tuesday morning for when students were here, and they were working all weekend. And they did an amazing job and worked tirelessly all weekend long to get that ready for students on Tuesday. Yes.
Thank you. You may recall that in two or three updates ago, we began adding elements with regard to the sinking fund program, not on the two budget areas, not on the two center areas, but with regard to some of the updates and scheduling. So I just want to be sure, for those in the audience that are listening and maybe thinking about projects that are... That we know to be part of the sinking fund, may be confused about whether or not that's bond work. We did begin adding some of those elements onto the three-month schedule and onto the critical projects, because as you know, we have a significant amount of work to do underneath the umbrella of the sinking fund, and Plant Moran Cressa is assisting with that... Us with that as well. So I just want to be sure, as we go over this, and certainly when we upload it on our website this week, it states right at the top that this is both the bond and sinking fund, but that's just a reminder, because it's relatively new, that we've started adding sinking fund projects to this update as well.
Any other questions? President Burton?
Just as a clarification, so if the Churchill tennis court is done and ready to be used, they will switch over to using some of those home courts for the remainder of their season, if it's ready in time? Is that correct?
I can't answer that with certainty, because I'd have to ask the athletic director if he's locked in his away events. They do that in tandem with other schools, so I wouldn't want to speak on his behalf. He... I was just making... Wanted everybody to know that he had set it up so that they wouldn't need to use it at all this fall. When it's got the green light, if it's all done and there's still season left, I'll let him know that if it's possible to make changes, he can. At minimum, they might just practice there if they couldn't change actual events, because some planning goes into getting those set up and timed out.
Okay. That's certainly not a board decision, but it is what's... It's the kind of thing that we're asked. By Tuesday or Wednesday, someone's going to call and say, hey, I heard this.
Well, that person might be the athletic director at Churchill.
The other... Backing up a moment to the Frost and Cooper, not a ton of detail, but what types of projects are being held right now, waiting on the permitting?
So really, it's over at Cooper, so there's a... We reworked the clinic area behind the main office a little bit. There are some walls that got built. They require certain inspections before you put drywall up on the other side. They have electrical roughed into them.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect the main office, per se. It's functioning as it normally would, but there is a small amount of work behind there. There's a little bit of work in the lounge off in a corner. And then at Frost, really, it's very minor, but it is holding us up a little bit, just in terms of connecting the dots. But by and large, almost all of the work from the summer got done.
Okay.
Just the areas where there's electrical involved. Most of the stuff this summer was more finishes. So what... But where we built walls, we had to install electrical. Those would be the areas that got kind of held up.
Okay.
And there's been multiple communications with the state. It's just one of these things that they're already two people down, and my understanding is they might have just got a third down, and the same people that review plans and approve permits are also the same people that are out all summer at buildings across the state. And there are many, many school districts doing work. This now... I mean, it's always in the summer. We know that, but there are many that are doing work, so they're very much overworked, and the system is set up that when they get behind, then we get behind, so.
We've been told we're on the kind of the high priority list, but we're not privy to the list. But, you know, unfortunately, it's a small project. It'd be a quick review for them, but there could be five 300-page projects that they have to look at in front that...
And that makes a certain amount of sense also with the blessing of our economy turning around. We've all... I mean, when you say school bond, the folks in this room, you know, perk up no matter where it is across the state, and we have been seeing district after district that are passing their bonds, and therefore, all of our folks are... Meaning our statewide folks involved in all this building are overworked. So, alrighty. Thank you.
This is Battlefield.
Can I ask a little question? Like, um...
How little?
Did the van shells come in yet?
At which?
Well, I don't... We were going to order all three of them and then put them in storage, and then have they been in...
They were going to build on site, so when Churchill's is ready, they'll put them in there, when Stevenson's is ready.
Franklin's is in.
So Franklin's is in. We were... Yeah, we were actually there for the new employee orientation not too long ago.
Is the Stevenson one going to be in for the opening?
I'll have to check on if that's going to be done yet. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Smith, for the report. If nothing else on that, then we'll go to 3B, Garfield renovation for the fall of 2017.
So I just want to preface real quick that the way that Plant Moran ordered your book and the reason I did a double-take our agendas, because I was used to looking at this earlier today, this has been broken out further to keep it more logical, just to kind of do one piece after the next for the fall and then also for the summer. So it is quite logical, and it just takes what's on the agenda and separates all those hash mark items underneath B and underneath C. So just to give you a heads up, so Mr. Smith will walk through piece by piece, and it is done with... Even though we bundle them together oftentimes, it... We had it separated, and we asked them to separate it so it would look a little bit more linear for us.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify a little further, so item B on your agenda in our binder is really items B through E. Those would be those tabs, and then item C would be tabs F and G.
Might I suggest, just for clarity, that we move through the binder in the order that it's listed?
Yes.
And we can assure you that we're covering all of the items on the agenda, but it may make more sense if we just move through the binder starting with the one.
So you don't have to go back and forth.
Sure.
Because by linear, I meant this.
Yes. Well, it will flow.
No, it does. It follows this.
The order here.
It just brings it apart.
So really, the first big award, or probably the largest part of this award package for tonight is really the construction bids for the Garfield Community School. We went out for bids in August, early August, August 3rd. We took bids on the 25th and had a really good turnout. In particular, we had a really good turnout where it mattered, which would be the mechanical and electrical trades. We had some budget issues early on with our estimating. We looked at ways to skinny that down to get within budget. We considered multiple alternates. Probably the biggest headache of the budget process was validating the electrical numbers, which seemed very expensive relative to what we'd seen on a lot of the elementary schools over the past several summers. Fortunately, those all... Those came out in the wash. We had excellent turnout for electrical. The numbers were very consistent, which really helped as we put together the award and helped us stay within budget. Both those, mechanical, electrical, were huge.
I think, would you say, because we've had these conversations, that doing the fall work was a good idea, because we got quite a bit of bidders, because they tail off. As we just said a couple minutes ago, so much work is done in the summer that they're looking for fall work, and that helped with getting a lot of coverage.
And really good numbers, too, I think, for that matter. For some folks, there could be a lull in their backlog. To transition from a summer project and roll right into a fall project works well. They might even be able to keep some of the same folks that are working in the district busy, and then hopes to attack some of the summer projects that come out for bid early next year. Hopefully, it's a good flow for a lot of these guys. A lot of the bidders you'll see are familiar names. They're people that have bid on past projects, and in many cases, won awards throughout. We did accept four... We accepted four alternates that we're presenting tonight. I'll go into those a little bit deeper as we dive into the numbers. All in all, we're looking at a recommendation all-in of $1,978,883. That's all of the hard costs, the CM fees, project contingency as well, of 10%. Turn to tab two. This is our budget summary. So we went in with a $2 million budget. It's worth noting that that budget is really a million five, $500,000 that would be allocated from the bond, and another half a million dollars that would be allocated from the general fund. And maybe Phil can touch on that a little bit.
That was... Did you want to discuss it? Go ahead.
So you may recall, as we looked at moving Garfield into... Or the Western Wayne Skill Center programs and GSRP into Garfield, we took a look as we reviewed the budgets and made accommodations for the schools that would no longer be renovated because they were being closed, and then the movement of programs to other schools. One of the things that we had lengthy discussion on with the board were our plans for where these programs would be located. So we did know that the budget that had been previously allocated to the Western Wayne Skill Center was just over $1 million, and we had discussed utilizing a portion of the Act 18 budget, if you may recall, because we had a fund balance in that account. And because we were putting a program there that is part of our Act 18 program, we felt very comfortable augmenting the bond budget with those dollars. And so when we talk about that $500,000 from the general fund, that is the sourcing for that.
Thank you for that clarification. So with all of the hard costs, we... And the accepted alternates, the trade cost for $1,655,409, the CM fees and costs, which would be your pre-construction costs, your staffing, your reimbursables, and your fee, all from George OAK Company, $157,933. We've built in a 10% contingency. So a little bit higher than what we've had in the past. We usually have done 8%, but it's on a much larger scale of a project in terms of dollars. There are a couple of things that we found out through discussions that may lead to some of those costs being needed right away. So we felt 10% was a more appropriate number for this particular project. But the good news is all-in, you know, we stayed south of the $2 million number at $1,978,883. Tab three goes on to really list the contractors out. This is where I'd like to kind of touch on the alternates. Alternate A2... There were two... We had six alternates. Two we did not accept. One was to look at the window replacements there. The windows there are a single-pane window, but in general, they're in really nice shape. Kind of almost strange, almost, that they're in such good shape. They appear to be newer. They're not the old style that we were accustomed to seeing across the district. The efficiencies, the thermal... The energy savings, also with the budget, the team made a... Looked at that hard and said that that's probably not one that makes the most sense. There are more important priorities within that school.
And you may recall, Garfield had undergone renovations in the '90s, and so if you think about the facility there, they have the dark anodized windows, and they actually look quite nice. We're not talking about windows original to the school as we are in most of our other facilities, so that was a big portion of that judgment.
And with that in mind, there was quite a bit of conversation through the bond team discussing that as an alternate, which was a pricey alternate, versus being able to capture other alternates and do all of those instead of. So it made some good logical sense. It made also some good dollars and cents on it.
The other alternate we accepted was alternate A3. This had to do with the make-up air unit in the kitchen. The Skill Center program has a little bit different use for the kitchen than some of the other elementary schools and other schools. Generally, we haven't done a lot with the kitchens, but in this case, because of the way that they use that program and the specific needs of this building, we had an alternate to replace the make-up air unit, associated lights and ceilings in that space as well. A4 was another one. These are the air conditioning mini splits, we call them, but they're the... Basically, the air conditioning that feeds the main office core. Part of this project was to really revamp the whole main office area, so budget allowing, it would have made... It wouldn't have made sense not to do this. It goes hand in hand with really with the renovations we're doing within that space. I missed A2, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
A2 was really to add a building controls front end and also to control a select few units in that school. We've done that at all the other schools. In fact, we've done complete control, but we were... A lot of the units that were there are currently functioning fine, but we also didn't want to invest a ton of money into controlling those units with the understanding they weren't new like they are at a lot of the schools we've been doing. So when... Probably when those units do require replacement down the road, that's when we would look to add on to this building system, but this gives us the infrastructure there to build upon. This was something that, in speaking with Mr. Law and Mr. Roberts, this was a high priority for them as well. And the last alternate really was...
You're going to jump... I'm going to jump. It's going to jump from A4 to A6. A5 was a lighting one that we did away with. It wasn't necessary. The bids came in. We had created an alternate lighting bid on the chance that our regular base bid for lighting was going to be very high because of the timing, and we were getting some word that Garfield is a different system. They have more drop-down lights in many of the classrooms, if you think about walking through there. There is some talk that the electrical for the lighting itself, as well as the housings and the lights, would be quite expensive, so we decided to go in a different direction, set up an alternate bid for lighting, just in case our original base bid was outrageous. Turns out, the original base bid for all LED actually came in very, very good. And ultimately, what we're learning more and more, things change fast. Companies don't want to go fluorescent anymore. They're putting a higher charge on fluorescents than they are with LEDs, because they're moving away from those pieces, and so we were able to just remove the alternate as an option, because our base bid, our original bid, came in very good to actually do LED. Pretty good.
Yeah.
And you want to do six?
And A6 really was to add some fire suppression to some of the wings of that school. If you'll recall, we did something very similar in the spring over at Grant Elementary School. There was a couple of wings that, for whatever reason, did not have fires... When I say fire suppression, it's the sprinkling... Sprinkler system within the building. They have a wood deck, combustible type of wood deck. So we presented that. This is really the same thing that's going on here at Garfield. Most of the school has it, but there are a couple of wings that do not. They have the same kind of underlying condition, where they have a wood deck that presents a little bit higher level of hazard rating. Looking at the types of folks that are going to be in this building, we've got our youngest, which are our GSRP program, and we've got some of the Skill Center as well, so they're a little bit maybe higher risk, higher priority. And also continuing on the same premise that we did at Grant, you know, that this is something we can... If the budget allows, we think is important, something we prioritize, the safety, and...
Because it wasn't required based upon the building, and I think the grandfather, if you... It wasn't required based upon the building, and I think the grandfather, if you will, but we decided if we can do it, we're going to do the same thing that we did at Grant.
Everything currently would be up to code without it, but it's a nice feature to add as well, I think.
So it was the team's recommendation to accept four out of the six bids, one of which we basically threw out because we didn't, the lighting one, because we created it just because as a sort of a fail-safe safety net, and the other being the windows, because they're in very good shape and they're relatively new versus some of the original windows in other buildings.
We had only one bidder that pulled out. It was A&amp;M Construction. They were bidding the carpentry package. Everybody else was the low bid on bid day. They held, we held post bids with all of them, scopes checked out. Everybody committed to the plans and the specs. So just the one bidder. So that was a plus. If you turn to tab four, that's really a breakdown and summary of how we get to that number. You'll see some familiar names here on here as well.
Yeah. Butcher and Butcher have been with us. They have an alternate. A&amp;M is in for the drywall and ceiling. Seven Brothers, the painters, they've been in many of our buildings in contrast. There's a lot of them here.
Yep, correct. Shoreview is, most recently, they were the electrician at Riley Elementary, Upper Elementary. Again, very, very good turnout, very favorable results. Very pleased. And tab five is even more detailed, but that's a complete bid tabulation from all of the bidders for the various categories. 19 different bid categories for the work.
So I'll just pause for a moment here, and if you want to just take a moment to take a look through. So you saw the bid summary, the bid tab summary, and then behind that, as Mr. Smith just mentioned, are each of the individual bid tabs that show the contractors that bid on that item and their dollar amount. Again, they are the low bidder for each of those areas, but because there is a good number of contractors in here, I think it would be pretty, if we give you a few minutes to take a look through, and then if you have
Any questions? We're all up to speed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And again, if you do have any questions, as you know, we go through a lot of information in these binders, Mr. Francis, where I would be very happy to answer any questions that you may have as you review these materials prior to our vote next Monday.
There's probably one other thing worth mentioning. Back in our April board meeting, we had a vote really on the Ock portion of this. We had some numbers that we presented that really weren't probably 100% final because we didn't, the fee is computed based on a buyout. So we had some estimates in there at that time. And so I guess the point being is that these numbers that we're presenting here are really the final numbers and would really supersede any kind of number that was previously approved for that.
So while we had the estimate and the board did vote on it, we could technically just keep going and say, well, we had the vote, the board approved it. It would just be a change order for any differences that we had from the estimate that we had back in April. But to be fully transparent, and since we have the better numbers now, what we're proposing is keeping that, those CM fees in there for this vote that we're going to request for next week, and that you just vote on it again with the new numbers that have been updated based upon the hard construction, et cetera, that we've learned. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. And for reference, this falls under the 5:15 meeting minutes, if you're looking for those old, the old numbers. It was from the 4:17 meeting, but be under the 5:15 board packet.
Mr. Francis, when you talk about this at our next voting meeting, will you specifically cover the fact that we have indeed voted on this previously and explained that it supersedes in case anybody in the...
Sure, yeah, I'll bring it up again.
...audience is looking back and wondering why we're redoing it. And the reason is that we would either have to re-vote on it like we're doing, or vote on a change, possible vote on a change order depending on where the dollar value...
Right. Yeah. And the dollar value wouldn't be enough to likely to trigger board action on the change order. But we also, at the time, because we were moving into summer work on Garfield, as well as we brought that up for fall work, we bundled those two at that point. We had better numbers for summer, but less so for fall. But we bundled together so that Ock could do that pre-construction work and get rolling on working and prepping us for fall. So breaking it out now, just again, it's mostly for just pure transparency. And I know that the district and the board likes to keep that as clear as possible. So I'll bring that up again.
It would be good during the meeting just to make that clarification once again to make sure there's no confusion regarding why we're voting.
It was my recollection that when we did that back in May, we knew it was an estimate at that time.
Correct, correct. We went off the budget, we rolled out some percentages, and came up with it.
I remember that specific.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, abatement.
This would be tab C in your binder. Again, all these awards really are for the Garfield Community School. They're, we just went through the main construction award, but there's a lot of other folks that will be involved in the whole process. The first one would be our abatement contractor. Similar process, we went out in August, took bids here at the end of August for the abatement work. The abatement work at Garfield really, for the most part, is the floor, the abatement that's in the building is in the floor tile there. That's almost nearly all of it. So that's predominantly where the dollars are being spent, is to get rid of that old flooring. So we had, received bids from four firms for the Garfield project. After post-bid interviews and discussions, we are recommending Building Decommissioned Services, LLC, as recommended by Arch Environmental in their letter dated September 6th. Recommendation amount would be $36,525. These I did not sub-tab just because they're quite small. There's only a few pages in there. But the next page, you'll see our budget summary. Original budget of $50,000 estimated for that school. We're at $36,525, utilizing our standard contingencies for abatement work. And we do expect there to be some after accepting some of these alternates with mechanical. There's probably some pipe fittings and such that may have asbestos in them that we'll need to use that for. We are projecting that. So our total recommendation, including contingency for the abatement work at Garfield, would be $43,830. Arch Environmental Award Recommendation Letter follows. And then the final page is the bid tabulation from the various bidders. Probably your eyes will go to Qualified Abatement. They were the fourth firm. They submitted several unit prices for the various items. However, they failed to submit a bid, really, with an actual bid amount. So we could not consider them for this particular award. But again, you'll see Building Decommissioned Services there with the low bid of $36,525.
Have we worked with them before, Stan?
We have not worked with them within this bond for Livonia. Arch Environmental has worked for them. Harry is familiar with them. We just haven't, they haven't been the low bidder on any of the projects so far.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, any other questions?
That's the one that, I mean, obviously, all of them need to be voted on, but that's the first one that's going to start happening because they always have to go in and bait first. So that'll be the leadoff hitter.
Something.
Yeah, the plan actually would be to have them start as early as September 25th. They've really got about, about three weeks of abatement work to do in there before we can go in there and start doing some of the other demolition activities and scope. So we've got the building broken down into phases like always, but they would target certain areas, week one, week two, week three. But yeah, this is an important one in terms of keeping the schedule and whatnot.
When there, the question, the GRSP program is in there currently, right?
Yes.
When you're abating, how do you, what do you, do they have to leave?
They've built construction walls, or they're going to build construction walls. It's going to be completely separated.
Okay.
That wing of GSRP, if you went in that back door, or even the north door into that wing, that's the only access there is.
Okay.
Ock is built.
There'll be no chance for them to come in?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if they haven't already put them up, they will be putting up construction walls to block off the other two hallways and the rest of the building for the rest of the months of construction.
Okay.
Will be completely not accessible to the GSRP folks.
Okay. Similar to some of the phasing we've done at the high schools.
Okay.
And then they'll also continue to monitor conditions throughout the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, the abatement work actually has some very stringent guidelines by the, as you can imagine, from the federal government and such. And that's part of these guys' jobs to comply with that, and that's why we have Arch Environmental here as well.
To make sure.
They're our environmental consultant, too. They do all the monitoring and testing and they clear, you know, that's kind of a team project.
It's part of the professional service that are the reason we retain Arch. It is just that. So they can make sure that, I mean, whoever we're hiring is and should be following all guidelines. But Arch is also part of that, doing some monitoring and testing and making sure that they are doing it absolutely correctly.
Very good.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, we're good.
That brings us actually to our next tab, tab D, which is our environmental consultant, Arch Environmental for Garfield Elementary, Garfield Community School, excuse me. Just a little bit of history. Back in the original bond, we went out formally for bids for this, and we used Nova Environmental for the elementary schools and a company called ETC for the middle and high schools. Last year, we made a change in the middle and high school level to retain Nova for the elementaries, but to transition to Arch Environmental for those schools. They did a great job there as well. Since that time, the elementary schools have kind of, those schools have finalized, Arch Environmental's in the picture. There really isn't, in our eyes, a need to continue to have two environmental consultants. Both have done a great job for us, and Nova Environmental and Arch have done exactly what we needed them to do, worked well along the way. But as you'll see later in this, the movement would really be to go down to one environmental consultant moving forward. It just, there isn't a need in our eyes to do that.
We've got a long relationship with Arch as well, and just, there's nothing against, doesn't reflect poorly on Nova. In fact, I know that Mr. Smith had said that we contacted them to give them the heads up, and they were very thankful for having the opportunity to work in the Livonia Public Schools, and they appreciated the notification that we were going with a single environmental consultant, so.
So this particular letter would be specific to Garfield Community School. This as a reminder, these are, we would follow up with a change order, but the costs are actually track time and material. We have unit prices for all of their hourly rates for the various testing samples that they take throughout that. And we bill accordingly against it. Any adjustments will be made again via any kind of reconciling change order. It's been the same process throughout for the environmental consultants. So just for the record, this would be for a recommendation of $27,500.
And just to clarify again, right now, we are speaking about tab D, which is Garfield Community School, Fall 2017, retaining Arch to be the environmental consultant. So when you're looking at the agenda, we're still on letter B, the Garfield renovations for Fall '17. It's just another, we keep going down one at a time with those bullets.
Okay, any questions on Mrs. Boundfield?
Is there, was there any retainage or any budgeting numbers that are going to change because of going down to one environmental consultant?
I wouldn't see anything significant, no. The fees that we've been seeing from them have been relatively consistent. It's just a matter of who's doing the work, I think.
No, but once we finalized things with Nova, I didn't know if there was any retainage that was left over because we prepaid anything, or if perhaps we had budgeted ahead for two environmental companies and possibly there was some savings that, I know it's not spent money, but just if we had planned forward with two environmental consultants, if that was helping us out in the budget-wise, that gave us little...
I think I can answer that. No, because they're assigned to separate projects. And so no project had two environmental consultants. We were just utilizing, as we did in the beginning, you may remember, we had three different CMs based on the level. So we just had different environmental consultants. And so the fees really are very, very consistent. And so we'll just continue on with a fee.
It makes sense that they were one per...
And it'll really make sense when we get into Summer of '18, where we have Webster and Jackson Elementary, and also LCTC, which is the secondary, but we really want to have two of them, and one of them just working at one building. So it just makes sense to smooth it out and have a single.
Makes complete sense that there was only one per building, so there would be no reason to have any changes.
I think we'll realize some efficiencies when we go out to bid the Summer '18 work because we'll be able to package that. And so there's a lot of administrative time associated with putting things out for bid and analyzing it and going through all those procedural things. We'll be able to streamline that a little bit with just having one consultant involved. And just to touch on, we did close out Nova's contract, and there was a, we wrote a deductive change order. So all of the board awards over the years equaled X, we spent Y. There was a savings associated with that, and that's all coming back into the, into the bond as a contingency. Yep. So we'll continue to do that for anybody that is being tracked that way.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions on the consultants?
Okay. And we're going to get to, on your table of contents, E, Garfield Community School Security Proposal, which is the last bullet on the agenda, B, Security. So we're still talking Garfield Fall '17.
But this is the last one. So this would be for security, the security package, which again includes... So this would be for Security, the Security Package, which again includes access controls, which would be your card swipes. It includes your security system, which would be more of your motion detectors, security keypads coming in and out of the building for the alarms, and then also your A phone system. And these are the phones, the touch buttons you see at most front entrances that, if you look in it, they display a picture into the main office, they can see who's at the door. So again, this recommendation is for Security Designs. They've been the contractor throughout the bond. They've done all of the security work at all of the schools. They've done a good job. It makes sense to continue with them to keep a standardized system. I will say the school's a little bit unique and that it has some different needs, so we met on site with Mr. Lau, Security Designs ourselves, and we walked the building and we talked about really the needs here. And there are some needs that are immediate that we're doing right now to prep for the GSRP program. So we're taking the existing A phone system that's currently in the main office, and we're going to relocate it down to the GSRP wing. So they'll have, at the far north end of the door, they'll have their own standalone A phone system that we can use for them. We're going to add a card access at that door and also another security keypad there. So we're doing some things now to, because there's a delineation of the building right now between GSRP and construction. We'll also be adding a new A phone system, of course, to the main office. So that's something we've had to add here. Where in a lot of schools, we just had to kind of take it offline and then reinstall it once construction's complete. Couple of card readers we're adding for the new Secure Vestibule. We've got some new motions. We're upgrading the security system like we have across the other buildings. That's really kind of the main scope of this project.
To clarify, in working with Student Services, we talked about, in the GSRP staff, how do we want to best have access for GSRP, not just for the next four or five months, but also then moving forward when we do move the Skill Center Program into the building? How will that play out? And through those discussions and walking around the building and talking with Dr. Terrell and the coordinators, Mrs. Rogowski, who works with the program, we decided that, as described, if you can just imagine that wing that we have of GSRP, that north door that is out to Orange Lawn, they actually prefer that to be their parent and visitor entrance exit point. And that buzz will be to the supervisor of the GSRP program, her office, which is right down that hall. So they'll have the camera, et cetera, much like a main office. As opposed to the back door at Garfield, which comes in in the kitchen and receiving and whatnot are there, it's a little more distant, but they really wanted to have it on that main hall. And then when we think in the future, and those construction walls come down, they'll be together, that will remain, and we're going to have some signage. So if someone parks in the back, we have, we're ordering signs that say, you know, visitors to come this way, so to speak. But even when the Skill Center Program is open, if someone comes to the main front door, as we all remember, they could be buzzed in by the main office if they happen to be a GSRP parent or visitor, they could be led over to GSRP. But if they also know, they could come right to that north entrance and be buzzed in directly to the wing of GSRP. So they wouldn't have to give that up and have everybody funnel to the front and then funnel all the way back to GSRP. So they'll have the two entrance points, one for each, but it doesn't have to be exclusive. They obviously would buzz them in and say, oh, you want GSRP, we can get you there, if that makes sense. Because we didn't want to do something now for four or five months and then pull it down and move it again. So this was the point that we all agreed upon would be the best spot for their entry-exit for visitors.
And the north entrance is...
I'm calling it the north entrance. It's probably a horrible description.
No, I know, but I'm just thinking, is there parking at that? I'm thinking of that.
It leads to the back entrance, which is east of the building. That whole large parking area is where the back doors and buses would drop off in the past. We'll have signs there directing them. But if you just simply parked a little more north, you'd be right near the walkway to go to the door, yeah.
Okay. I just wondered if there was parking over that area.
There's actually more parking there than in the front of the building.
Perfect, okay.
Just to clarify, so what we're recommending for tonight is a recommendation specific to Security Designs of $12,037 for the contingency of $2,500 for an actual award of $14,537 inclusive of the contingency. You know, the budget was really, it's very consistent with what we've spent in other elementary schools throughout the last few years. It's really not bad considering we've had to do some specific things here that we haven't had to do at other schools, so. The last page of this has a little bit more detail on how those numbers were achieved and what kind of the splits are between the security and the A phone and the access control pieces. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to...
What's the difference between a door strike and a door contact?
So a door contact really is essentially, they drill a little hole up in the top of your frame, and they put a little device in there. And what that does, it ties back to the security panel, and it says, hey, your door's open. So that, in theory, if someone's propping the door, we're going to know, the building will know about it when that system's armed. The other part, the door strike, is really what's used for access control. So that's when you take your district ID badge. It's a way that, it's a lock that when it's presented, it retracts the lock and allows access to the door, but it's programmable. So it's a piece of hardware that, depending on how it's being done, can be part of the construction or the security vendor can provide it. Typically, if it's an existing door, we've had the security vendor provide it, so we're doing that with the north door for GSRP because that's an old set of doors. But the hard construction cost will handle the electric strike for the new entrance because those are going to be all new doors.
Thank you. Any other questions on the security?
Strikes are much more expensive.
Depends on who's pitching. Okay, so if there are no other questions on that, with regard to Section B, will each one of the bullet points be a separate motion?
I think that's probably the way we have to do it. And it's the way we've done it because you're going to vote on the construction manager, you're going to vote on the hard construction bids, et cetera, et cetera. We bundle all the hard construction bids as one as we do, but the abatement is separated out, which, and the security's separated out, and the consultant, which is the professional service, would be, so as they're written here, each one would be a motion.
And Mr. Senators, if you just want to make note that Mrs. Wasney can confer with us and will work that through the agenda.
Excellent. All right, so is everybody okay with regular agenda for these items?
Yes.
We're excited to get that going for the program.
Okay, so now we can jump to C, and it looks like Tabs F and G are for the two items under C, is that right?
That's correct.
I'm a slow learner.
So there are two items under, for next summer, really, what, the first one being the construction manager. As you'll remember, we had three construction managers at one point. The bond is, I don't want to say it's winding down, again, there's still lots, a long ways to go, but we've moved forward with Georgia Ock to handle the Garfield work. We've worked with them to do the miscellaneous summer projects. The other contractors currently are not under contract, but they've completed their obligations and done a good job with it as well. In fact, we looked at all three and came to the conclusion earlier this year to move forward with the Ock for some of these previous projects. Based on that same rationale, we're kind of, we're coming to you guys today again with the same recommendation that we continue moving forward with the Georgia Ock Company, Jeff Hamilton, Mitch Delang, and their team to complete the next summer's projects as well. And it's important at this point because they provide more of a support role at this point from pre-construction services. They're constantly helping provide feedback to the architect, French associates on constructability issues, they're helping validate budgets, providing estimates along the way. And so really, what we wanted to do here was not to present the numbers like we did with Garfield, well, here's all the staffing to run the project. We wanted to just present to you really the pre-construction piece, which is kind of the getting it up to bidding. So that's really what this recommendation is for. It's really specific to the pre-construction piece. Again, it's a time and material not to exceed like it is with their staffing. It's really worth noting, if we go back in time to the original bids when we bought this project out, each company that bid on the project may or may not have provided a different fee associated with the middle school or the high school or the elementary package. In the case of Georgia Ock, they had a certain fee that was specific to the high schools, and that fee varied depending on which types of buildings they were working on. Since these are traditionally more elementary-based programs, the fee that we're going to use next summer or next spring when we come with the recommendations will be at 1.8%, which is their elementary package. But the important thing to note is really, you know, several years later now into the bond, they're still honoring the commitment to use the 1.8% that they submitted back in 2013 with the original bids. But that'll all roll itself out when we go to do that work, when we present those bids in the spring. But again, this piece was really just for the pre-construction piece. We want to give them a change order so that they can bill against it as they complete the necessary work to validate the budgets and help get those projects off to a good start. We have Ock's recommendation letter. Again, you'll find that they're very happy, they're thrilled to be still with the district after all these years. They value the relationship and excited to keep putting the same team forth. I think at Garfield, right now, the plan is to continue with the same superintendent, Pat Lorraine, who built Franklin and Stevenson, so it's a natural progression for him. Mitch Delang will continue to be the construction manager, project manager. Jeff Hamilton will provide executive-level presence on the project. Obviously, we haven't figured out who the superintendents are going to be next summer, but we'll staff those accordingly. Each building will have its own superintendent, with maybe the exception of Buchanan. We're going to see how we can staff that because that's a smaller scope. We'll see how we can make that work and make it efficient, but yet make sure that we're completing all the contractual obligations we need to make sure the project goes smoothly. The last page really is a breakdown of kind of how we got there, but for the most part, it's really estimating hours. And then there's some support hours from, really from Mitch mostly, but that's the kind of support and coordinate and do all those things that are necessary. So the recommendation here would be for $55,520 for the Georgia Ock Company.
Any questions on the construction manager? Mr. Senators?
I just want to say that's a pleasant surprise that they're keeping at the 1.8% considering the market conditions have changed, though, considerably. That's, it's a great indication that people do want to work with us and, you know, that Plank, Marine, Cressa, and the district, I think that's really a testament to you guys and all the hard work you're doing, so.
Thank you.
We, too, will please. We know with the environment that we're in right now and the opportunities that these companies have to accelerate their rates based on, you know, the work that's out there and available and to hold tight four years later to those original estimations is certainly something that's greatly appreciated by the district.
Any other questions? And I just want to reiterate, this is a not-to-exceed number, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. So we'll go to Environmental Consultants, Tab G.
So Tab G is for a recommendation for Arch Environmental. Again, the same environmental consultant that we just recommended for Garfield. This is for Webster, Jackson, and the Livonia Career Technical Center. It really does not include anything for Buchanan at this point. We don't really know what's going to be impacted by Buchanan yet, and the hope would be that it would be minimal and be able to be contained within the confines of this recommendation Actually, a couple of these schools next summer have a, what I would call a very high content of asbestos-containing materials. Webster is kind of a sister school to Coolidge. Several hundred thousands of dollars of abatement work are anticipated at that school when we go to bid it out. Jackson also has a high percentage of asbestos-containing materials as well. And the Career Technical Center, we expect to see some there as well. So generally, you know, we're planning on roughly four weeks of abatement for these schools, as indicated, and that's really what drives a lot of the costs, is they need to be present and have staff on hand during the abatement activity. So the fees that they need to complete the work are mostly a product of the anticipated abatement schedule. We did realize some efficiencies at Jackson despite its high level of abatement. We had had some work done early on by Nova Environmental. So for the most part, we're able to reuse a lot of that data. Arch needs to go back and revalidate and make sure they're comfortable with all the information.
It was like discovery work that they had done.
Yeah, yep, correct. So we're able to, there's no need to reincurs some of those costs. They just need to spend some time to get comfortable with the findings and validate it for themselves so they can use it going forward. So you'll see that's reflective of the cost for Jackson. So the Nisha, there's usually two parts to this, to their quote. So if you look at the first letter, which is for Webster, you'll see that there's a line item for the asbestos, Nisha inspections, and then the bidding. And then the second part is really the field work associated with, once the abatement work starts occurring, there's supervision that they have to do, and there's various tests and sampling that they have to take along the way. But if you get to Jackson's letter, you'll realize that, you'll see that that cost went down to $1,500 as opposed to like the eight or $8,500 you see it on the other schools. And that's, again, due to some of the efficiencies with having some information that someone else has already done that just needs to be recertified and validated. So with those three schools, the recommendation would be a change order again for Arch Environmental in the amount of $88,500. We would track it again on a time and material basis and reconcile any differences that occur after the completion of the work.
Any questions? Seeing none. Oh, yes, go ahead.
They're not removing the asbestos, correct?
Correct.
They're just overseeing the process. Somebody else will come in and actually do the abatement.
We'll have to bid it out to find out who will end up doing it. And Arch is there to monitor, to be basically our representative, to ensure that we know what's there, what the scope of the work to get the bid going, and then once we do have someone who is, the board approves as the asbestos removal company, then that, as those dollars are making, that's what we're paying Arch to ensure that they're testing, monitoring, and making sure everything's done right and removed properly and fully.
So for instance, on the Webster, the 2,500, that goes to Arch or that goes to the company that is removing it? $2,500, sorry.
We don't, we don't, that goes to Arch. We don't have a company that's removing it yet.
Okay.
Arch is going to...
There'll be another fee for that. It's not a subcontractor to Arch. It's going to be directly for us.
Correct. It's someone, it's going to be a company, once we find out exactly what's in there and how much we need to do, we'll put out for bid. The company will, hopefully, many companies will bid and will get a good price on it. Then Arch will ensure that when they're doing the removal of the asbestos, that it's being done correctly, they'll test for us, et cetera.
Okay.
So this is just the first step. As Mr. Smith said, we're anticipating several hundreds of thousands of dollars in asbestos removal over these buildings. That'll be the actual process of removal.
But they still both will be directly reporting to you and your team as opposed to working for one of, like...
They don't, they won't be working for Arch. Arch is working for us. They're a professional service, much like some of the other companies that we use are a professional service, and they're ensuring, they help discover what is needed, what the scope would be, and they help guide us to drive the price down of whoever ends up ultimately doing the work.
Any other questions? Seeing none, everybody okay with these two items also going on regular agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we now concluded with...
That's the whole book.
In a nutshell.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we know that a lot goes into putting these binders together and then getting them all to the board, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Take one of those and dress down.
I shouldn't know. Can't wait.
Thank you.
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 You've got documents that are coming around. There should be three stapled packets. I'm sorry, I'm stealing your thunder there, Mr. Johnson, for you getting to announce the agenda item.
I figured you knew what you were doing. I may be presumptuous, but.
All right, so, we are down to item D, sale of properties.
Correct. So, what I'd like to do, everybody should have three stapled packets with them. If you can somehow notice the address, or figure out which one's which, I'm going to start and go through each property. So I'm going to go Clay, then the Old Perrinville site, and then the Naken Skill Center site. So if you can pull out the one that you can see says the 10 plus or minus acres of land on Mallory Drive, that is Clay. And what I would like to do is go through the bullet points and the highlights. Mrs. Oakwes and myself had a long conversation with Dana Abrams, our attorney, who wrote up the documents, and had been the person of communication with the purchasers, as well as the district, going back and forth. So these are her documents, so just kind of put that out. These were documents that came from our attorney. They started as a basis from the Washington sale with the same purchaser, and we went from there. So any requested changes from either party went to Ms. Abrams, and then she shared with the other party, and they were agreed upon before they were put into the document. So this is our, our working document. If you have questions about it, or anything like that, you know, make sure that you speak up. But what I'd like to do is then go through this document and hit the high points, without question. These are items that, you know, she essentially said, you know, you're going to want to bring this up, you're going to want to bring that up. We could go paragraph by paragraph, but quite frankly, many of those paragraphs are, all due respect-
Boilerplate.
It's boilerplate, attorney, legalese, so to speak. The things that are going to be important, and that may change from document to document, we're going to, we're going to touch on. And some of the boilerplate items, I may not, it doesn't mean if you have a question about it, we can't get an answer for you, but I'm going to start with Clay.
Mr. Francis, let me just, for the benefit of the audience, just back up just one quick moment, just to put in context. So, as Mr. Francis said, we spent a great deal of time working with Infinity Homes, who you know, we brought to you last month, recommended to be, to have the award go to that bidder. So we had multiple bidders on each of the properties. Clay, the Western Wayne Skill Center, and Naken is a combined property, where folks had an opportunity to bid on it separately, and then the Old Perrinville site. We, Mr. Francis, worked through an extensive process with regard to our team, as well as working along with Bill Bowman, who was our real estate consultant, and Dana Abrams, our attorney. And you may recall that we brought to you, just, and also for the sake of the community, a recommendation that Infinity Homes be awarded the bid for all three properties. They were the high bidder on all three.
Correct.
And we have also had experience in working with Infinity Homes, as they were the purchaser of the Washington property, now known as Washington Park. And so what Mr. Francis is going to go over with you this evening are the purchase agreements that we have combed through extensively, and our attorney has combed through, that we would be recommending to you for voting on for next week. So, just for the sake of the, the community and the public, just a reminder for folks of where we were, and then, you know, where we're headed.
And two items. One, if you, and you received these late last week via email, what I just handed out has typographical fixes. An address was typed in wrong, things like that. There's no substantive change, but don't have your old one with you, you can go through, I mean, you can have it with you, you can do whatever you want. But, just so you know, it is ever so slightly different than what was emailed to you, because we did find, like I said, address was typed in wrong. I also went back, and though you've seen them in the past, I printed out and put at the back of each of them, the proposed concept plan that the Infinity Homes had created for each site. So that is in your packet as well. So this is going to look slightly different than what was emailed to you, and if you have a very sharp eye, you'll, you'll find the typos. So, but I'm going to go through that. The other part is, it's interesting when you're doing three of these at one time, how easy it is to cut and paste, you know, something, or just sort of in your mind, say, wait, do we write that into this property or that property? So, if you have a question, and we have to kind of go through it for a minute, even Dana, who wrote them all, was saying, hold on a second, I have to remember if I put that number of days into one, because while most of this is the same, I mean, a vast majority of the, all the boilerplate is the same, many of the other items are the same or similar, there are, you'll see some minor changes between them, because they are still three unique properties, and the way Infinity is approaching them, as far as how they're going to develop them, needs different timelines, or whatnot, and what for. We have a building on two of the three properties that need to come down, et cetera. So you'll see those slight tweaks. So just kind of my disclaimer before I get rolling on it. So let, any questions before we get started?
Are there any differences in the contracts based on the fact that they're in two different communities?
There are no substantive, when it's written, it usually would just refer to municipality or government approvals, and that's for the developer to figure out the changes, you know, the differences in the two, and to get those approvals, but we have timelines for them. There's, I wouldn't say there's anything substantively different. It's more along the lines of what their timelines needed to be for that particular property.
Okay.
Less the city, and more the property itself.
Okay.
Yeah. So let's start with Clay. With Clay, first and foremost, paragraph one, page one, we have $1,225,000 is the agreed upon purchase price. So I want to point that out, and that's something that's obviously different from, from each parcel, okay? With that, we're going to bring this all thing going smoothly, back next Monday for your review, your vote, and approval, and then obviously signature. So, once it is signed, I want to bring up that within three business days, after the signing of the offer, the purchasers need to put their earnest money deposit, and for this particular property, that's $25,000 in escrow with the title company. And you'll find that in paragraph eight on page two. So if you're on page two, in paragraph eight, it'll say within, it starts off within three business days, that earnest money deposit of $25,000 gets held in escrow. They will have 180 days to do their due diligence, and to start government approvals. So if you look at paragraph 10, part A, you'll see the 180-day line written in, like the third line in there. There's also a line that states that within 120 days, they must begin their municipal approvals. So within that 180, that's why we're saying they must at least start their municipal approvals within the 180 days. During this 180 days, if the purchaser finds, is dissatisfied with their due diligence, if they have concerns or problems with government approvals, et cetera, they may, based upon the due diligence and government approval concerns, get their earnest money deposit back. That $25,000 can come back to them if they notify us that we are rescinding our offer, we no longer want to purchase this piece of land, because we have an issue with something, okay? That's, that's very common, that's normal. The only real piece that we had to negotiate was, what timeframe would they, would they need for that parcel, okay? Now, forget there, and we'll get to this in a moment, but Clay is still, as a building, is still sitting there, so that, that comes into play also in a moment. Any questions so far? So 180 is their original due diligence timeline. They may extend by 90 days for continuing to get their government approvals. So, if they need more time, which may not be an uncommon item to say, you know, I mean, things with cities can go quickly, things with cities can go slowly. So, the key here, and I'm in 10C, page four. The key here is that after the original 180 days, if they need the extension of the 90 days, that earnest money deposit becomes non-refundable. The $25,000 is no longer refundable. So if they back out at this point, after the first 180 days, the $25,000 becomes the district's. It's going to become the district's regardless, it's either going to go to the purchase, or we're simply going to keep it. As, and the attorney would say, you can't force, nor can any court force someone to buy a property, they can, you can only have these types of things written in to say, okay, we've missed our timeline, you get to keep that earnest money, okay? Any questions with that? They can ask for, after that 90-day extension, a second 90-day extension, and I'm in 10D, which is on page five, they can ask for another 90-day extension. Now, for that, they do have to put an additional $75,000, and pay it directly to the seller, which is the district. So at this point, they'd be in for $100,000. Again, that's paragraph 10D on page five.
Bottom of four.
Bottom of page four.
Is it bottom of four?
Yeah.
It was, it was at 1.5, I'm using the old version, sorry. Hot off the presses, folks. I know, and do as I say, not as I do, my mother always said to me, but. Then, there is a line in 10F, and it makes Clay contingent on the purchaser closing on Old Perrinville. And the reason this was done is really, it's a protection for both sides, but so that we, we specifically can sell both properties to Infinity. They wanted all three properties, we wanted to make sure we put in language that ensured that all three properties went to them. So it's, it really works both ways. They were very interested, clearly, because they had the highest bid on all three, to be able to purchase all three, we were very interested in obviously getting all three sold. This is simply a safety net for us, yes.
When you say we were interested in making sure that all three went to them, just for clarification, you're talking about after the bids were received-
Correct.
And they were the, the high bidder on all three, we wanted to make sure that we consummated the sale, and that we did not wind up with one property coming back to us.
Correct. And if I can clarify even further than that, we were interested, and still are interested in selling all three properties, period. During the bidding process, Infinity is the only bidder on Old Perrinville. So, they were interested in having all three properties, nobody else was. Once it became clear that they were a high bid on all three, we are putting in a line in the purchase agreement to ensure that they, in fact, do close on all three.
Thank you.
If I can-
Don't go away with two, move one.
Correct. If I can, yeah, to say it as best as I, it's, nothing, you know, nothing, there's not really a concern, it's just a matter of, we wanted to put it into, into writing. Okay? If there's any, yes.
So, just looking at each one of these, it's a domino effect, because Clay is contingent upon Perrinville closing. Perrinville is contingent upon Clay closing.
It's not Clay closing, when we get to Perrinville, Perrinville was contingent on them earning that-
The right to purchase it.
Right to purchase it, which they're getting.
Okay. It doesn't have to close, you're right.
Correct.
The language says, also receiving the award of the bid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And quite frankly, if something, we may alter that timeline, since it's our piece that we're saying we need to close on, on Old Perrinville for Clay to be able to close, and we find that it might have just been, let's say, a government delay on approval or something, we could always alter that timeline to make sure that they all fall together.
Okay, but the Skill Center, or-
Naken and Skill, yep.
The Skill Center does require the closing of Perrinville.
Yeah.
So the two of them require the closing of Perrinville, the other one just requires that the bid be accepted.
And, and, correct. And Perrinville's only contingency was that they get, get the bid, which they did, and so that was written in for, for them to say, okay, then, you know, you guys can't back out of us getting that bid, since you've already offered it to us. So it's just working in both ways. It's, it seems, or might sound a little confusing, but in fact, all it's really saying is, these are going to roll in a fairly similar timeline overall, but Perrinville is, when we get to it, you'll see, has a much shorter timeline than both Naken, Skill, and, and Clay. So, realistically, Old Perrinville should close before we ever get to doing the Clay and the, and the Skill Center.
And that's largely because we don't have a building to take down out of Perrinville.
Correct. Correct. I saw a hand somewhere, was it? What was your, I saw, I saw-
Somewhere.
Anyone? Anyone?
I was just going to comment that, because we have to raise Clay and raise the Skill Center, that although we may have the first portion, and we'll talk about the land contract separately, for the Naken Skill Center, it is, it is, we feel very feasible to be closing on Old Perrinville prior to the other two, solely because those two both have facilities on-site that we need to raise and go through an additional due diligence process afterward.
I'm sorry, so in other words, if it closes first, that they can go ahead and start their process of what they're going to do with that property, correct?
Which one? Perrinville?
Perrinville.
Oh, it's theirs then.
Yeah, it's theirs.
Once it closes, it's theirs.
But even though the other two may not have been raised, or anything like that.
It's not a problem.
Okay, gotcha.
It's their, their property once they close on it.
Gotcha, thank you.
There is on paragraph 13, which is located on, at least at one time, on page six, I mean, go ahead and correct me if I'm wrong anymore, but in paragraph 13, Clay, the closing for Clay is on or before June 15, 2018. The timeline is written, it could be before that, if all due diligence is completed, and all work is done with regard to their preparation, and, as well as the demolition of it, and inspections, et cetera. But we have it listed as on or before June 15, 2018. That would put the money into the fiscal 2018 year, just from a financial standpoint. And speaking of demolition, there's quite a bit between paragraphs 13 and paragraph 24, that is somewhat the boilerplate acknowledgements back and forth, but when we get up to paragraph 24, the purchasers did request some type of timeline on the removal, completion of the removal of the building, which is quite fair, we've asked them for many timelines, and given them certain numbers of days to do things. So, we do have demolition being completed to that structure by the district, it will be our sole responsibility, and we're saying on or about, and that's actually, I'm quoting the, the purchase agreement here, on or about March 1, 2018. That should be somewhat conservative, actually, because we've already begun the process of investigation of demolition on that building. It is now pretty much empty, and, and so, we do have several months, but it does take several months to remove a building. A couple of the other pieces that go with, with that demolition of the building, is an agreement that the purchaser will be able to review the plans and agree upon the plans for removal, so that it is fully removed, and they also have the right during demolition to, at their expense, have a third party, if they want, come and, and witness and review the demolition process, that it's adhering to the approved plans, and they can say, hold on, this isn't what you guys said you're doing, very similar to if you ever built a house, your architect will come and say- to if you ever built a house, your architect will come and say, you know, are these guys doing it the right way? Much like, we actually have people also go out and make sure it's being, being removed properly. And then after it is removed, purchaser has forty-five days to review and check the site again to ensure that everything was removed properly. This really stems from, in their interest, ensuring that everything gets removed properly because they're the ones, after closing, that are going to have to incur the cost to, to build on a site that may not have been, had, had a building razed and removed completely and thoroughly. So that's all that piece there of twenty-four discussing that agreement of approvals and timelines. In essence, and you do have the, a refresher on what the, what their, what their original plan is, was there something that jumped out at you? Those are really the, the highlights and the high points. With, with all three agreements, I'll throw out, and I didn't have it as a bullet point, but if their, if their concept plan significantly changes, then they are to, to send us a copy so we can review. Once they own the land, they own the land, and, and they're going to put up their things. They're in the business of building homes, let's just be clear. What they want to do is, is build residential on all of these areas, that's of course what they want to do. But if something came up that they had to change it or alter it significantly, whatever their original plan was, maybe that's due to government approvals or some other reason, then it, there is also in writing that they would, they would show us those plans. And we don't anticipate any significance except when we get to, or actually with Clay, the only one that's possible, and I'll just put it out for, for the group, there is a church that abuts this property. It is our understanding that that church is, has discussed with our purchaser, Infinity, the purchase of a piece of their property that is adjacent to Clay, which means that once we close and Infinity owns Clay, they may proceed and end up winding up with more acreage. That could change their plan. Essentially, it would just expand their plan, but that's something that we wrote in saying, if that significantly changes your plan, you would show us how it affects our property. We can't do what would be on the church's property, but how would it affect what you're going to build on ours? Does that all make sense? And that would actually be a very good thing if, if that occurred.
Prior to the closing, right?
Prior to, so once we sell it, right, once we sell it, it's their property.
Okay, good.
President Burton?
President Burton.
If that were to occur, would that come back to the board for, the board approval? If there's a significant, and when I say that, if, if there is a significant change in the, in the plan? It, it doesn't say so, I was reading in paragraph twenty-three, it doesn't say it would go for board approval, I mean, it would say it would connect to the district, it would really be the district's decision whether or not it comes to the board or not.
Right. It could, because it may not be as significant as, i- i- if it was something significant, we would bring it to you because we need your guidance on to how you want to proceed, is this significant enough? But it could be a very simple, an attorney may, may advise, they altered it, simply they moved where the green space was going to be, you know, to, to accommodate, now they have more acreage. It may not be very significant. They need to show it, it's not triggering automatic board approval.
It just says we have ten days to review it and then give any feedback to the seller at that point in time.
Okay.
And I believe if we give nothing, that, that presumes that we're compliant with it.
And that, and if that actually did occur, that if the purchase from the church did occur, which we have no control over whatsoever.
Correct.
It may be advantageous to the neighborhood because then it would potentially, should they so choose, allow them an, an access out to Newburgh Road.
Correct. Correct. I, I have not heard anybody that wouldn't, that hasn't said that's, that would be great because it would be more houses, it would be better access. There are many good things that would happen, but none of that would be within our realm of control.
It's not, it's not at all within our control, but it is of, of interest to our,
It's of interest.
Our neighborhood that's probably watching what's going on with this sale.
The last sentence on twenty-three does state, if the concept plan or the revised concept plan is modified substantially by the purchaser, the seller, that's La Vona Public Schools, shall have the right to approve the modified concept plan or terminate this offer and retain the earnest money deposit. So we do certainly have a role in that, in that process, and, and I can assure you that it would be our intent to bring that back to the board for, for dialogue.
But there is no definition of modified substantially, so that's something that we would all have to look very closely at.
Okay.
Mrs. Bonfield.
Um, so I guess we talked about, you know, this being out of our control, once they purchase it. However, it's my understanding that they just can't willy-nilly go and build things once we pass ownership to them, they're still under obligation to meet city codes and regulations. So if it's zoned as a residential area, they're not going to be able to put a Walmart up in that area. And I, I think when we talk about, we lose control of what's going to go there, it may make some people really nervous that what we're saying is they can do whatever they want. And they, they really have to stay within the city guy, city planning guidelines. And so even though we're not controlling what's going in there, the city is obviously not going to go in and allow them to build like random business or, or whatever. So i- it's not, I, I guess, I don't want anybody to think that it's just, they can just, whatever they can up, and I know we talk about their residential home builders, that's what they say.
To, to your point, though, they, they would have spent, e- even without any extensions, they, they would have spent a half of year planning and getting municipal approvals, just to your point, and potentially with the extensions, up to a year, getting approvals to do something. Of course, they would probably want to follow through that because the city would, would have already approved those items by the time we close. We're not going to close until they have a, all of their approval. So that's very much to your point. And, and to clarify, when I was saying it's out of our control, any sale of, of a church's property is not in our, our control, you know, so that, that's something that I was referring to, I apologize if I was.
No, I just, we keep talking about, and, and I don't want anybody to get super nervous that just because we're not controlling what they're building or that we don't, once they sell, we lose, that can kind of control, it's, they just can't willy-nilly go and put something random up, that they have to go through city planning, the city council, and there are a lot of other obligations that they need to meet to make sure that the community is served well.
Let me make a point to that, because when you're looking at the, the proposed plan, it already has zoning, the present zoning in there. The present zoning is residential, it's not commercial. It may not be the density that they want. The density is always dependent upon what the zoning board agrees to. That is part of the contingency in paragraph ten, to follow all city codes and ordinances. They may present their plan to the city, and the city says, we don't like your density. That may take them back to the drawing board. That may inv- impact under the contingency if the city doesn't give them approval for the development they want. They're not going to, speaking from past experience, I've handled a lot of these cases, it would be unusual for them, with an R, I think this is R two and R three zoning, it would be, be almost impossible for them to change the residential zoning to commercial, even if they wanted to. That, that's not their bailiwick. Their bailiwick is to build homes. What they typically want to do is to increase the density from an R two and R three to R one, or, you know, even a, a higher density than that, because they want to make more money. They want to put more, more homes. But the city may not want that tight of a density in this area, they want it to be consistent with the surrounding areas. I'm, I'm not saying that there is, there's going to be any problem there, but understand that there is a contingency that if, if the plan doesn't, if the city for some reason doesn't approve their density, it, it involves the contingency and the whole deal is contingent upon them getting that. So, yeah, you're, you're right that we have s- some control, but the city will tell them what kind of density they can have and whether or not they're going to approve that plan.
And, and to Mrs. Bonfield's point, you're confirming it's residential. I, I think what, what you're concerned about, or, or that you're bringing up the point that someone listening might be thinking, well, gee, if it's not in our control, then anything in the world can get put there.
Yes, that is my point.
And what, what Mr. Johnson is saying is, it's very, very unlikely because the city is in fact going to be part of those approvals and it's already zoned residential, and really the nitty-gritty is simply which type of density of residential it's going to be, it's not going to be, is this going to be a tattoo parlor or, or a strip mall?
Correct.
That's not the question.
And can I ask Mr. Johnson a question? Sorry.
You want me to sit over there?
Yes. I want you to get up and move. Um, uh, once, a- anything for the zoning commission, then the residents have the ability to.
They would have a, a public hearing.
They, okay, so there, there, so there will be a public, or may, you know what I'm trying to say.
If they're seeking a, a rezoning to a higher density, there's going to have to be a public hearing on that issue. The residents can then come and voice their opinions at that, at the city.
So they will have an opportunity.
They will have an opportunity to be heard.
If they change the zoning.
Correct.
Okay, that's.
If they're, if they're attempting to change the zoning.
Okay, thank you. You say it much better.
Okay.
And I think many of the discussion points that we're having now simply fall into all three properties, so I, I don't, I think the next two will go a little quicker when we do them, because the, um, these same questions are, are going to be similar for, for the properties. Were there any other, these are all, good point, anybody else have anything?
No.
Was there anything, Mrs. Oakley, that you wanted to add to that Clay one that was?
I think we're good on Clay, are we ready to move to Old Perrinville?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the one that says ten plus or minus acres is the?
Five plus or minus.
I'm sorry. Five, point zero eight, I didn't roll mine over. Still using my old version, sorry.
Put that away.
I know, but I got it highlighted. Okay, so Old Perrinville, just to clarify, this is the island at Ann Arbor Trail and Hines and Farmington Road. There is no building there. The building was moved one inch at a time over to Green Beach. And so we're, we're not discussing a program, we're not discussing a brick and mortar, we're discussing the island of five acres at Ann Arbor Trail and Farmington Road and Hines Drive. And, and I just want to clarify that, less so for, for the folks sitting here, but more so for anyone that just might hear Perrinville and wonder what we're talking about. We're talking about a, a plot of land, not, not a program or a building. The, the purchase price is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You see that straight away in, on page one. And very similarly, within three business days after signing the offer to purchase, the EMD of twenty-five thousand dollars will go into escrow with the title company. Their due diligence time period is less, it's ninety days. I will say that, that we thought that it would be quite simple because there is some plating on that piece of property and figured, you know, easy peasy, but it's not as easy, they're finding out engineering-wise, to get the right fit on that plot of land. So it's, even though it's a lesser time, ninety days, there is also a ninety day extension working very similarly. Outside of that first ninety due diligence period, though, if they do go to the extension, their earnest money becomes non-refundable. Okay? So they have the first ninety days to rescind the offer based upon their due diligence. I know that they're already looking and, and trying to draw up proper engineering plans for that, for that piece of property. So I jumped a couple of things there. Ten A had the ninety day due diligence, and ten B had the earnest money that they could get back if they rescinded within there. And then getting on to ten C, this will say that if they can get that extra ninety day extension for government approvals, and at that point, the EMD becomes non-refundable. Oh, we've talked about this, Old Perrinville is contingent upon the purchaser receiving the award of Clay, very different than closing on, on Clay, it's receiving the award for Clay. Okay? And there's not a hard date for close, it is listed as closing within fifteen days of the completion of the due diligence period. Okay? So fifteen days within the due diligence period being completed is when we would close. If you did the math on that, it would also be in, in this fiscal. Now, it is proposed, and we discussed this in August, I can't remember how many weeks ago, but it was at some point in August, that it would be a condominiums for this site. I don't think that surprises anybody, nobody could figure out how you put very many how, traditional, single-family houses on that site. This would be a condominium, um, plan. Condominiums are not structures, they're how you, you, you plot things out. In this instance, the condominium would be what we think of as, um, yeah, multifamily, but the townhome, very similar to other things that we've seen around, around the city. Okay? If you do see site condominium anywhere, that is not a traditional multifamily condominium, it's very, very similar to, um, single-family homes, has more to do with the, the way they, they plot the lands, et cetera, it doesn't have to do with structure. Condominium is referring to how they're plotting it out. A site condominium is different than a multifamily condominium. Really, Old Perrinville is pretty straightforward, there's, there's not a lot of, of, once, once you get the, the timelines and the earnest money, there's not a lot of curveball to it. Are there, are there any questions?
Yes, Mrs. Burton?
Just, yeah, page four, C. Should that be City of Westland instead of City of La Vona?
Couple times in there.
So, yeah. Good catch.
Good catch. I saw it twice, it's twice.
I see two times. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please, if you're flipping through and you see something like that, you know, tonight, when you're lying in bed reading this, go, go ahead and email me what paragraph and page, and we'll, we'll get them cleaned up.
Because you'll be looking at it also.
These are still, these are still in, in draft form, and I appreciate your help with that.
We have you on speed dial for eleven-thirty, so make sure you keep it on your nightstand.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, we'll go through it again with a fine tooth.
I was going to say, now that you know that there's one, you'll skip over it.
Exactly.
Because it is Westland on page seven, and so it's, it's correct in other places.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, item E.
Pardon?
Item E.
Item E on this, on this one?
Yeah, which one? Page five. I think it has the wrong address.
This offer is contingent upon purchaser also receiving the award.
That's the Clay.
That's the Clay. It's contingent on them getting the award for Clay, which is on mailer, yes.
Okay, now I understand, thank you.
Any other questions? This offer. You're doing good.
Spell check, anybody spell checking?
That's coming. It's the computer.
Problem is, La Vona was spelled right, it just wasn't the right city.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Um, we are on to the Nakan and Skill, correct? We're good with Old Perrinville?
Correct.
That's a little bit thicker packet, because I did do the, there's a land contract that goes with this one, so it is thicker. I'm going to start off simply saying one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the purchase price for the combination of, of Nakan and, and West Wing Skill Center property, that's just under twenty-one acres. Having said that, I want to move to the land contract. This is different, I will come back to the other bullet points, but they're very similar to things that we've already talked about at the other properties. The land contract is new, so if you want to find that spot, it's, it's the second half of your packet. I'm going to start off with saying very clearly that the land contract was our attorney's suggestion, it is not being done for financial purposes. Many builders, and there's nothing wrong with a land contract, but many, many large popular builders that we all know use a land contract in order to go in phases on their, on their property, and they get the sale of some properties from their first phase to then be able to pay for the other pieces of land. This has nothing to do with that, and I'll explain why we're going to a land, land contract.
Phil, for the, for the benefit of the people who are listening.
Yes.
Can you explain to them what a land contract is?
It's, you're the attorney. I, I, let, let me. Let me say, essentially, a land contract is where a purchaser pays for a portion of what is agreed upon to be purchased. They gain the rights to that portion, but not yet to the portion as of yet unpaid. And other, traditionally, land contracts can be complicated with percentages of interest, et cetera. We have none of that in ours, because this is not being done for fiscal reasons. Essentially, what's happening is, in this land contract, as with others, they're going to pay for a portion of the land, and then several months down the road, they're going to pay us the rest of the money for the other parcel. Simple as that. And it will become theirs when they pay the second portion for that parcel. And let me tell you why we're doing this, and I think it will become very, very clear. Nakan is without property on it. Skill Center has a property on it. Not only does Skill Center have a property on it, that property is still in use, unlike Clay. Students will not be leaving until January of 2018. Infinity has said, gee, we need to wait all the way until X date when you get the Skill Center down, because we're purchasing this as one big property. We would love to be able to have started, how could we accomplish that? Our suggestion was a land contract. Simply stated, this land contract is going to work as such. When we go to close, and we'll talk about the dates on that, but just spoiler alert, it's June of 2018. When we go to close, the purchaser is going to pay us 50% of that $1,150,000. So that's going to be $575,000. We're going to receive at closing half the money, quite frankly, for less than half of the property. They will have all rights to what we call Nakan in that property.
Just over seven acres out of almost 20 acre total.
The 13 and some change acres of the Skill Center will still be ours. That's how a land contract works. They have not, if earns the right word, or not purchased it yet. It's out on contract. And when they will get that land, when they fulfill the contract. This will not be done in increments or monthly. What's going to happen is, they're going to come in and work on Nakan and begin the process of preparing to build homes. In the meantime, as we're raising the Skill Center and doing the due diligence with that planning and demolition, and again, Infinity will have their 45 days after demolition to inspect, that timeline's going to push a little further. They cannot, without explicit consent from the district, do anything on the 13-plus acres that is the Skill Center. They can't begin to use it, prepare it, whatever you want to do, utilize it, it's not theirs yet. They will pay us when it is ready, and we've got a date of January 31, 2019, laid out for that. That's a conservative move for us to be able to remove the Skill Center completely and have the due diligence afterwards for the purchaser to check it out, and it probably even goes beyond that. But we could close earlier, we can't compel them to close any earlier, but January 31 of 19 would be the latest we would close. To finish the land contract, they would give us the other $575,000. Then they would be able to move on to whatever, it would become theirs. So that's why we're doing, we're not doing it again for financial reasons, they have the money. They just wouldn't be able to have the land, because we're going to say, timeout, we need to take down this building. But as a win-win, they can begin developing the seven acres. Does that make sense? Other questions? It actually was a very good suggestion.
It was. Mrs. Jarvis.
Have they agreed to that?
They've, yes, they've agreed to everything that's in here. And right now, they're just waiting for this. They said, let us know Tuesday, I'll win, so.
Yeah, it's a win-win situation in reality, because it allows them to acquire what they call an equitable interest in a portion of the property that they can now build on while waiting for the other property to become available and pay for that and acquire the equitable interest in that property, then the whole thing is theirs, so.
But they wouldn't be allowed to change the price on the...
No, once the contract is signed, it's essentially set in stone.
Can we anticipate the timeline maybe before that? I mean, we've given ourselves a very generous timeline for both Clay and the Skill Center to be able to raise that property, clean up the site, take away any debris, et cetera, so that we are not rushed through that process, because it involves us bringing to you an environmental consultant, a company to do that demolishing, to actually be able to have the work done, and some of that is weather-based, and so there are generous timelines included in here. So some of these may transpire sooner than that, but we do have certainly ample time to be able to complete that work at both sites.
We do have written in November, just like we had the March date for Clay, we have written in on or about November 1 of 2018 for the Skill Center to be down. That gives them 45 days post-November 1 to do their inspections, to make sure that it was done per the plan. Same exact language, they agree upon the plan to demo. They may have at their expense a third party to oversee and witness the demolition, and then 45 days after it's completed to check it. That then would get us really almost a holiday time, which isn't a great time to discuss having things happen. So we just added another month to it. So that's on the land contract part. Any questions on the land? It's, in essence, it's simply they're going to give us half the money, and then later on, they're going to give us the other half of the money, and away we go, so.
I think it was a great idea.
I can really quickly run through the agreement to purchase. It's very similar to what we talked about, so I'll hit the high points. Same three days, three business days after sign purchase agreement for the EMD, except there's this $50,000 on this site. It's a larger site, it's larger than the 25 before. 180 days for due diligence. Again, they must start within that time period, their governmental approvals. They can ask for another 180 days of due diligence, but once they get out of the original 180, the EMD becomes ours, I'm sorry, the district's. And the contingency of Nakan and Skill on Old Perrinville closing, which should have happened months prior to this happening. And the final piece is, we did write in on or before June 15. And June 15 is when we would do the land contract, not now. We would not be signing the land contract, that would be something that we'd take to closing and say, here's what we, you owe us now the 575, and in reality, it's a little less than that, because we would just keep the EMD, it'd be 525. And then that triggers into effect, and we have a date in there of January 31 of 19.
Questions? President Burton.
And again, for the benefit of the public, the plan that we have in our packet that we are basing our approval off of, granted, it's got to go to the City of Westland in this case, is site condos, which again, mean visually, they look like single-family homes. They're simply allowed to be on a little bit smaller size lots, as several are in our communities, surrounding communities. So if they hear the word condominium, in this case, they're not talking about townhouses. We're talking about single-family homes.
We're looking at, the concept plan currently includes 78 homes on this property.
And some generous area of green space.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, are we good to put the, these three offers for purchase on the regular agenda?
Yep.
Anybody want to do their spell checking, just let me know. We'll get it fixed.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody, have a nice day.
Thank you, Phil.
And that's it for Building a Site, President Burton.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is item four, Curriculum Committee, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we have two items to discuss. One is academic programs. Teresa O'Brien's going to give us some information on the academic programs from the summer of 2017. And then the other item will be the iReady Purchase. So, welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. I'm very happy to share with you how our summer camps went this year, and just give you a quick, brief overview. We offer three different camps through the city. Students Helping Students Literacy Program, and then we have two Title I camps, Camp Emerson and Camp Frost. Our efforts to reduce summer slide, we focus on maintaining and increasing literacy and math skills, keeping students active, and improve their attitude about school. Make them excited to come to school the following year. So I'm going to start with Students Helping Students Literacy Program. This is a partnership we have with Madonna University and the Kurt Foundation, and we began this partnership nine years ago. In this summer literacy program, Madonna University students tutor exiting kindergartners, or this year's first graders, and first graders moving to second grade throughout the district in reading and writing. This year, our program served 15 first graders and 19 second graders. It ran from July 17 through August 3, and was held at Roosevelt Elementary School. Each Madonna literacy coach worked with groups of one to three students and provided research-based instruction. And the coaches received training in quality assessment practices and are currently in a teacher education program. Some of the results they shared with us, obviously, students made improvement in all areas in grade one and grade two, a running record improvement, and typically, a student in first grade. This is a three-week program, so if they did a running record at the beginning, and their child who, you know, might be at the beginning levels of reading, for them to make that growth in three weeks' time is not always something you see. And if they're a struggling learner, they're focusing more on the letter and sound ID and identifying the words.
Can you tell us what a running record means?
A running record is when a student reads out loud and the teacher keeps track of the words that they read correctly and the mistakes that they make. And we do a percentage of self-corrections when a student attempts a word and then fixes it. And so that's given one type of a deduction, and then if they make the mistake altogether. A child that is at an instructional level is usually between the 90, gets 90 to 95% of the words correct. So we don't want everything to be really easy, that's too easy of a book. Instructional level means they had to work at a few of the words in the book.
And our Fanta-Sipnel assessment is what we normally use to get a running record?
Yes.
The F and P assessments, when you hear us refer to those.
Yes. So Camp Emerson and Camp Frost, these are our two summer camps. Both camps started July 10 and ran for four weeks, Monday through Thursday. Started July 10 and ended August 3. Camp Emerson had 124 campers from Cleveland, Hayes, Roosevelt, and Cooper. Camp Frost had 76 campers from Garfield, Rosedale, and Johnson. Students got picked up throughout their neighborhood, not necessarily where their school bus stop is during the year, but more of a community one in their neighborhood, and brought to school each morning. They started their day with breakfast, gave them a good, healthy breakfast, plus some time to socialize and see other kids their age. And then their three-hour schedule began, and each school did provide literacy in a little bit different ways, but each school provided 90 minutes of literacy instruction. They engaged in reading lessons, they engaged in writing. Younger students had literacy centers, so campers could then practice their reading and writing. And we have been focusing on informational texts and activities that they are doing with informational text. They also use technology. They had access to websites with leveled textbooks, topics with high interest and current events. They were able to read and highlight online while looking for answers to comprehension questions. So this, again, helped them increase their skills with finding evidence within the text and was very engaging for students to do it that way. While students were on technology, teachers pulled small groups of students and worked with them one-on-one or with a small group. Did I miss my friends? Where's my messy friends? Oh, there's my messy friends. So our youngest students got literacy centers each day. And so while the teachers pulled students to do reading, the students got to do center activities, like this science activity. They had science, social studies, math, writing, and technology centers for the K-1 students at Camp Emerson. Students also got math every day. They worked on reinforcing math skills, math practices, and of course, problem-solving activities. At Camp Emerson, they got art and physical education. And at Camp Frost, they got physical education and technology as their specials each day. And those rotated over the two weeks, they got art, and then two weeks, they got PE, so that they got to have something fun each day. Their day ended with lunch, so they got a good, healthy lunch on their way home, and then their day ended. Both camps provide parents with a survey, parents, student, and staff, about how the camp went. And parents overall felt strongest that the camp had a positive impact on their child. It improved their attitude towards school, and they liked the parent communication this year. The student survey results, student number one was that they felt safe at camp. They enjoyed their time to read, and they enjoyed their time to practice math. Each school assessed students differently, but I did kind of summarize just improvement. So it wasn't necessarily comparing apples to apples when you're looking at what Camp Emerson and Camp Frost did specifically. Students' Fanta-Sipnel running record levels were used out of our illuminate system to determine where the younger students started. Not all students then took a post-reading assessment. Older students took a reading comprehension assessment. But your K-1, 2 students just practiced the reading, they didn't take the time to do another running record. It would have been very time-intensive. But as you can see, there was improvement in, you know, a vast majority of students and some students who just maintained based on their pre and their post. So I would be happy to answer any questions about our summer camps this year.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Burton.
What grade levels did the Camp Emerson and Camp Frost?
Camp Emerson takes students leaving kindergarten through eighth grade, and Camp Frost takes them starting at third grade through eighth grade. So Emerson, they started taking some younger students, getting them a little bit earlier.
And if I remember correctly, these camps are by invitation. Teachers can identify students who they think may benefit the most over the summer over having some of this intervention to help eliminate loss of learning over the summer.
Yep, so these are Title I, paid for with Title I funds, so students who are identified are invited. And we start, I can speak from being at Hayes, we started with the students who are most at risk in reading and invited them first, and then when we had more spaces to fill, we looked at our math kids. But always knowing that kids who don't read over the summer have that bigger loss, we would start with the kids who needed that reading support first. So some kids could be in there that were okay grade level in math, and that was totally fine, that, you know, how they run the camp, but most of the kids needed the reading instruction.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Mr. Centers?
Do I recall that the Emerson camp had a bit better turnout than the Frost? I wonder if Frost, if those levels stay consistent, if they'll have room to maybe invite the younger students? Just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I think there are some things we want to look at and have some meeting with Cindy Pearson this year about our camps. And, you know, I'd like to look at maybe providing that the assessments are the same at both camps so that we could kind of look at and compare, you know, how kids are doing over that four weeks at both camps. So that would just give us a better look as to what's going on, so. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. O'Brien, given what appears to be...
Mrs. O'Brien, given what appears to be a pretty high success rate on these children, and we're just doing it for exiting kindergarteners, is there any thought of expanding that program to maybe first and second grade?
So this program at Camp Emerson starts with exiting kindergarten and runs all the way up. So there are students, yes. So Camp Frost has not added the youngest students. So when they both started, when both camps started, we started with third graders. Myself and Mr. Duraskovich went to Mr. Francis at the time and said, "We wanted to add younger kids. Could we offer an opportunity for our younger kids and see, you know, if those parents would let us invite them and educate them for a couple of weeks in the summer?" And it has worked well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Mr. Center said, to expand that program at Camp Frost to the lower grades, particularly in light of the third-grade retention bill.
Yep.
That's something we need to be focusing on.
Yep. I agree.
Mrs. Burton?
Mrs. Donald, again, do these children all have to qualify for Title I?
So all the schools sending are Title I schools.
Right.
So you have to...
Title I building-wide.
Correct. Well, so if you're at a school that's targeted assistance, you can only invite the students who are identified Title I. If you are a school-wide school, so like Hays or Cooper, then you could invite anyone because you have a high enough percentage that all are, it's considered by the federal government, that all could benefit from the things that you offer through Title I.
Okay.
So they do see that as kids get older, some of them, even though they're still, might be Title I in their school, they're mentors. So Emerson students are mentors to the younger kids. So they're gaining from helping teach the others, but then they also have the upper all in a group of literacy support, too.
Okay. My thought is, is kind of along the lines of my colleagues here, is there a way that we can expand the number of students who can take advantage of this program? Or have we invited all that we can invite, and this is the maximum number that are accepting our invitation? Or are there some students out there at these schools who could be invited, but we've not extended the invitation yet?
So I can only speak from experience from working there, that typically, I got everyone in who wanted to get in. There might be a specific grade level that maybe, so like, third grade, I might have had more third graders whose parents wanted to accept the invitation, and I didn't have enough slots, so I might have called one of my colleagues and said, "Do you have enough slots at third grade?" And so we would do it that way. We turn away at Camp Emerson, very few. At Camp Frost, they have the opposite. They have a lot of parents who say and accept the invitation, and then come July 3rd, didn't...
Didn't attend. Okay.
So typically, almost 90, more than 95%, I would say. You know, at a specific grade level, we might be capped out because you don't want to have too many kids in a class with a teacher.
Right. You've got to have the proper amount of staff to take care of the kids.
So there are some things we want to look at to improve this program, and so I think it's just something this year that with Mrs. Pearson and the principles of those buildings, we want to look at.
Okay. So it sounds like you're utilizing every avenue that you can in order to maximize the number of students who can benefit from the program?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Are the children provided with transportation as well?
Yes. They get busing to and from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
You're welcome.
That ends that part. We're going to go on to B, which is the iReady Purchase. Mrs. O'Brien's getting everything.
Hi, Mrs. O'Brien.
Oh, gotcha.
Saving on energy. Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome. You're so welcome. Yes, I am happy to bring our iReady Purchase for your consideration. So just a little background, last year was the first year we administered both reading and math diagnostic, K-6. We assess students three times a year, utilizing the results in order to determine how students were performing and what instructional needs that they had. These assessments provide teachers with specific information about strengths and weaknesses, and then provides teachers with specific interventions to do towards students' weaknesses. The benefits of this program have been that it's an online adaptive assessment, it's aligned to our district math and reading curriculum, its items are aligned with the state's M-Step Assessment, and provides our students with an online testing experience in order to prepare them for our state test. Assessment results are available immediately following the completion of the assessments. Also, these results identify the strengths and instructional gaps for teachers to help them make clear, concise, and immediate next steps instructional planning. So in preparing for the 17, 18 school year, we are recommending the following iReady purchases. And in your packet, you have a chart that I'm just going to go through a little bit, and then you also have the curriculum associates bids there. So at the elementary level, we would like to purchase 6,700 iReady Diagnostic Math Licenses and the same number for reading. This will allow us to continue the current administration of the iReady Assessments for all K-6 students. This year, iReady Reading was approved by the state of Michigan as an initial determination as to whether a student is at grade level, and we will be using that to help us identify what students will be needing an individualized reading plan along with our Fanta-Senpanell reading levels. The diagnostic will also provide teachers with the targeted lessons that will help them close that gap if they need that. So this bid is broken out into K-3 and 4-6, the grade-level bands, so that we can utilize the state's early literacy grants to reimburse the district for purchasing electronic online assessments. So we asked for the bid that way. So the total cost for elementary diagnostics is $72,360, which is a 10% discount over the regular price with a savings of $8,040. I'm going to skip the secondary diagnostic and just stick with elementary for a minute. We would also like to purchase 1,000 iReady Reading Instructional Licenses to use with students in first through third grades. These licenses will be divided among our K-4 schools to provide targeted Tier 3 reading instruction to our most struggling readers in first through third grade. The total cost for the iReady Reading Instruction License is $24,000. If you go back up one level, I'm going to go to secondary diagnostics. So we are recommending purchasing 200 iReady Reading Diagnostics and 200 math licenses. This number may increase as some of our secondary buildings are looking at what their needs are right now and have created their student support plans and are looking at how many students they would like the diagnostic or the instructional at the secondary level. For example, Churchill High School is requesting to use the iReady Math Diagnostic in two of their algebra lab classes. Franklin High School would like to administer the iReady Reading to ninth-grade students in their study skills classes. So we're starting right now with 200 of each, and then we'll adjust that if we have a larger need. So the total cost for the 200 reading and the 200 math is $2,160. And again, this is a 10% discount off the list price, saving us $240. Again, some of the buildings at secondary are starting to use instructional licenses, so we are looking at purchasing 200 of the instructional reading and math licenses. And again, we have Emerson Middle School, so they are requesting a site license because they have created as a part of their student success plan, using the instructional with all students at their school. And they used it very targeted last year and saw some really good success. So as a part of their plan, so if you remember a couple of months back, we presented all of our student success plans, they have this very much integrated into their plan. And so it was less expensive to get a site license for Emerson than to buy diagnostic and instructional for everyone in both reading and math. So that license for Emerson is separate. It's $18,905. And then the instructional licenses, 200 reading and 200 math is $12,000. For our secondary instructional cost to be $30,905. So the funds that we'll be using to purchase the iReady Assessments and instructional licenses, we'll be using our academic services budget, but we'll be paying, we'll be getting that reimbursement as we apply for state grants that come out, and there's actually one that just opened last week. 31A at-risk-state money we'll be using, and our leftover 104D grant from last year, Early Literacy Assessment Grant. So these grants will provide, are meant to be used to provide students who are at risk or struggling readers with the additional interventions with the goal of reading at grade level by the end of third grade. So in addition to the iReady chart in your packet, like I said, you also have the price quotes from curriculum instructions. So in summary, we are requesting the approval of purchase for the iReady Diagnostic and Instructional Licenses for a total cost of $129,425. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Dan?
Has it been considered doing site licenses for the elementary schools with reading? Just because it is a main priority for us right now with third-grade reading? And has there ever been any contemplation of what that would cost, or if that would be even an effective use of money?
We actually haven't thought of doing that with all. So last year, we, the instructional licenses that we purchased for our K-3 students, it comes out to be, you know, if I'm a struggling reader, is it better for me to get a reading lesson with a teacher or to be on the computer during school? And so what we looked at, and we didn't really have good data, we couldn't really tie the instructional piece to an increase last year, but it was our first year. So that's why actually this year, we're getting a little bit less of the instructional licenses and have really tried to hone in on what we're doing, you know, for reading support. So it is something we can look at as we gather more data and see the benefits or determine maybe we don't want to do that. So it's something that I think we just need more data on.
Sounds good.
Liz?
Thank you. Mrs. O'Brien, if I remember correctly from last year, the licensing on this follows the child, rather than being a generic license that the classroom can, it doesn't follow the computer.
Correct.
The software, and the license follows the child. So I'm curious to know if any of these children are the same ones that were licensed last year, or how those children, how they identified which children would be licensed this year as opposed to those who were licensed last year? And then what kind of progress was made, how that was determined?
So it is on an individual student basis. We do get their results fall, winter, and spring. So buildings have the data of how students did last year, if they use the instructional license, and even if just the diagnostic on how they did on the standards based on iReady. So that is one thing they can be using right off the bat at the beginning of the year to determine who needs additional support. But we also then have our Fanta-Senpanell running records that we look at. So, you know, most students don't make growth over a summer, but some do. So you do need to do that pre-assessment. So that, the instructional pieces, we definitely can see who had them, and then, you know, as we begin to look at their data at the beginning of the year, do they need it again? And how much did they use it? You know, like anything, if you don't go on and use it even often enough, or you, you know, give the effort that's needed in order for you to really engage in it, then it's not going to give you a good read and help you improve in either reading or math. So we can look at those results and determine, you know, what the students' needs are, but then we also look at this year's data.
Oh, sorry. Mrs. Oakley?
I was just going to follow, add on to that. As part of the process, and we shared this in a broad overview way when we talked about Operation Student Success, but a requirement for every school is to do a data dive after each round of assessment, so three times a year. The achievement team of the school and classroom teachers are brought in to review all of the data on a child, and before those meetings, and it's, the plans are determined as to what interventions will take place for those children. So that is oftentimes, if I'm not mistaken, where a team will decide which students may benefit from the utilization of an instructional license. And so while we generally say we're purchasing this for the bottom 10%, it may be a student who's within the bottom 20% or who falls somewhere within that realm that that team feels that the benefit of utilizing an iReady Instructional License would be of great support. There are other students who perhaps are significantly below grade level where the most primary intervention and utilizing that time most wisely may be with only utilizing for a certain period of time with an interventionist themselves, whether that be the teacher or another support staff member. So those data dives are really important to get to just that question. They have data from the prior year as well as current assessment to determine what those children need, where their deficiencies are, and whether or not utilizing an instructional site license for iReady would be a vehicle that they believe would lead to improvement. So it's not necessarily a hard, fast line to say just simply the bottom 10%. In general, that's how we approximate the number of licenses. But those discussions about individual students, their progress in the intervention they need really is where the magic takes place in helping that child move forward.
I just had one to clarify. So every student, elementary, K-6 student gets a, will be able to have a diagnostic.
Correct.
You only use that three times a year. You could use it more if you wanted it, or no, you just, three times a year is when you give that assessment, that diagnostic.
So the diagnostic is pretty long.
Yes, I know.
It's longer, but the program also has progress monitoring that you can give your students every four to six weeks. And so then that's just like a quick check based on, you know, how they did and...
That's off the diagnostic.
Yes. Yep. That's part of the diagnostic tool.
Okay. So then, and then the instructional reading, the elementary licenses, you have, that you're going to acquire 200 for the elementary?
1,000 for the elementary. 200 reading and math for the secondary. So 1,000 instructional licenses.
Down here.
Yeah.
Oh, down here. Sorry. It went down. Okay. So you're going to do 1,000 for those, targeting those students who need extra assistance. They'll be put on a, on the instructional reading. They'll be given that opportunity. Correct?
So, yes, but it's like Mrs. Oakley said, so it's the team determining who would benefit.
Correct.
Knowing who the students are and what works best with them is one of the most beneficial things you can determine.
Okay. And the site license for Emerson is for everybody? All students can use the diagnostic, but not the...
No. Everything. Instructional also.
They get everything at Emerson. They'll have the whole kit.
The ability to use it all.
The ability.
The building use. For one year. That's the caveat. It's a one-year...
All of these are just one-year licenses.
Yes. It's just a one-year license. Okay.
And so part of that is part of their student success plan that all the administrators at the secondary level submitted to Mr. Archibald and reviewed by the Division of Instruction. And so that's something that they will monitor and provide data and metrics. Remember, we talked about determining success criteria? And so those metrics have been established, and then we'll continue to look at that over the course of the year. Just for the amount of students they were looking to cover.
Yes.
It was more fiscally responsible to choose a site license. It doesn't necessarily mean that all of the children in that school will be utilizing it. It just means that it, there was a tipping point at which, when you're covering, you know, 300 students, you know, versus maybe 150 students, it makes more sense fiscally to buy a site license.
Okay. And I'm sorry, and then the secondary, same along those lines, like the Holmes, the other two middle schools, they're getting how many? They're still going to utilize, but they're not all going to be?
So they have more targeted classes.
Okay.
Like the example that I gave of Franklin Student Success, ninth-grade student success... success, 9th grade student success. Churchill's Algebra Lab would like math licenses.
Okay, so certain people would like to utilize it.
So in their determining who they wanted to target it with, then they're going to just use it with that group.
Okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Mrs. Frank?
We had a conversation a while ago just about iReady and about the accuracy of it and the ability to accurately reflect. I think we talked about doing the Fontis and Pennell and there was some discussion about which one is the best. So we're not, as a district, you said, we're still looking for some more research. We're not committing to this for the next. This is kind of going to be another year of research to see if this is the best way to utilize this program as opposed to this is for sure what we're going to be doing in the future. Is that accurate? Is that fairly accurate?
Well, it's, so this is only our second year of using it for reading. It's been identified by the state of Michigan that we can use it as an initial assessment to determine what students are at risk to going to 3rd grade. So now it's really on us to say, is this an accurate representation? And so during this next month, our teachers, K-4, are administering the iReady in reading and math, and each student will be given a Fontis and Pennell, you know, reading level. Then we're going to be looking at that, parents will be given that information and then we'll be determining between those two things, with those two things together, who's the most at risk that we need to make sure could be possibly held back in 3rd grade. So we're using it that way, but we need to make sure that we're aligned, that those, when we read with a student in a Fontis and Pennell running record and use this, that they match.
Right.
So.
Makes sense.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. And this is just a technical on your spreadsheet. For the secondary diagnostic assessment, it shows 200 and 200, but then it shows 700 licenses. I'm assuming that's just a typo?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
So should it be 400 or should it be...
No, it's 400.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions regarding iReady? Mrs. Bonifield?
So the diagnostic side gives suggestions on how to improve deficiencies. And they have the education licenses or the learning licenses. I'm assuming that it gives not only targeted on the learning licenses, but it also gives recommendations for interventions that are not necessarily tied directly to the learning license.
Correct. That's one of the reasons that we purchased it was that their diagnostic information gave us specific skills that students needed to move to the next level and then lessons. They provide lessons to the teachers that they can do. The instructional piece then would pick up because it's connected to the diagnostic and give them experiences with those same deficiencies plus grade level standards. But for a teacher to be doing interventions with a student, it provides them, this is what the student is strong in, this is what the student's weak in, and here's what you should do. And in some areas, it's 10 lessons that it gives you to do in a row of ways at getting at those deficiencies.
Okay, so it actually does have an educational piece to it. The, and I keep calling it the wrong license, what's the...
The instructional piece.
The instructional license is sort of an icing on the cake maybe for kids who are going to learn best in that kind of environment and not all kids are going to be self-guided on the computer and...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I think that ends it. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
So we're going to put this on the agenda for the next...
On the agenda for the next... Okay, that ends the curriculum committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5, Finance Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bonifield.
Thank you, President Burton. And Mrs. Smith is quickly approaching the podium to talk about 5A Financial Statement Timeline.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonifield. As we discussed at the study session, I just wanted to remind the board and the public of what our timeline is for our 16, 17 financial statements. So I plan to bring a draft copy of the financial statements to our study session on September 25th where I'll go over some of the highlights of that report and answer any questions that the board might have. And then we'll bring a final copy or final draft of the financial statements to our Finance Committee meeting on October 9th. And I'll be joined by Plant Moran, our auditors, who will go into greater detail on those reports. And then we plan to bring the final, again, the final copy of the financial statements to the board for acceptance at the regular voting meeting on October 16th. So just a very brief reminder of what our proposed timeline is.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns, anything they'd like to say? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
There we go.
Wow, I liked that one.
Probably felt that...
A whole committee just happened.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6, Personnel Committee. Mr. Centers, I don't have any items.
I have nothing.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Policy Committee. Mrs. Frank, I don't have any items. Do you have anything?
We do not.
No? All righty. And the last item on our agenda this evening is Item 8, Legislative Committee. Mrs. Jarvis, I don't have any items. Do you have anything?
I have none.
No? Okay. Mrs. O'Brien? No. All righty. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Thank you so much for joining us and we will see you again next week. We are now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.